Okay, good evening, everybody, and welcome to District 25 School Board Meeting. Today is November 15th, and I am, we're all loving the hustle and bustle of activity and student voices in the, in our boardroom today. So I'm so glad you're all here, and thank you all, parents and educators and the community for being here. We are going to get, get this meeting rolling with a roll call to begin with. Lana?
Member Conley?
Here.
Member Olonechak?
Here.
Member Serniglia?
Here.
Member Jogi?
Here.
Member Scott Bellato?
Here.
Member Philip Peck is not here. Member Faso?
Here.
Thank you so much, Lana. We'll now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
Okay, this evening, we'll start our board meeting with our favorite part of the agenda every time we meet is recognitions and presentations. Dr. Vine, if you could, let's start with our South Middle School Golf Club. I love seeing the pictures on Twitter, and I'm so excited to see you guys here.
Thank you. So for each of our recognitions tonight, I'm gonna first ask our students to stand if you're here when I call your name, then we'll ask the coach to come up, and if you have words to say or a video to share, we can do that at this point. So first, congratulations to our South Middle School Golf Club. The following students qualified for IESA State Tournament along with Coach Phil O'Grady. So if you're here, please stand. Peyton Camardella. Ryan Murray. And the IESA State Girls Golf Champion, Jennifer March. And we'd like to invite their coach up.
All right, good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to talk on behalf of some outstanding young golfers that, and people that I just simply help kinda guide as club sponsor. But first, wanna highlight Peyton Camardella. Peyton made her second appearance, she's in eighth grade, and she made her second appearance to the state tournament this past year, and she's a relative newcomer to the game of golf. But we're especially proud of her, given her resilience and ability to bounce back. I know at State this year, she got off to a bit of a slow start, but she really, really stepped it up on the back nine and finished shooting with a score of 108. And I gotta say, for someone that's relatively new to the game, that's really remarkable, because you're under a lot of stress and pressure with fans there. But Peyton, just an outstanding job, really proud of you. I'm gonna go ahead and say some words about our state champion, Jennifer March. Jennifer is a seventh grader. Last year, finished fifth in state with a score of 78. I mean, come on, that's just unbelievable, right? But she's, she was on a mission. She left that course last year, she wasn't happy with the, I mean, any one of us in this room would be thrilled, not Jennifer. She was simply on a mission this past year, and nothing was gonna get in her way. And off the course, you probably won't find a kinder, sweeter person, but boy, you get her on the course, look out. I mean, there's, there's a quiet tenacity about her and toughness that just really has an ability to shine through, and she certainly proved it this past fall. She shot 34 in the front nine, 34 on the back. You can see up here on the screen, she was trailing on the 18th hole by a stroke. She had to hit this 15 to 18-foot putt to tie her opponent, which she did without, without a problem, I think. So calmly sinking this putt, she sent, sent the championship into an extra hole or a playoff hole, which which you can ima, I mean, which basically secured the tournament, and she won going away. So, and on the playoff hole, she birdied it. So to sink this putt here and then go into playoffs and sink it is absolutely amazing, and to finish with a score of 68, and like I said, a real, real competitor, and to go on that mission and prove your score by 10 strokes is absolutely amazing. So, super proud of you. I've been running this club for over a decade at South, and I think we've impacted quite a few students along the way. And, you know, certainly with, given a few more resources, I think this club can grow, and then we can impact so many more students, and I think these young ladies are a testament to what this club can really produce. So, thank you for your support, great job, ladies.
Okay, well, the board will have to make sure that if we're at Arlington Heights Golf Club and we see the South Middle School Golf Team, we will just leave because we're not as good, and, and we look forward to seeing you guys in the LPGA, PGA, out there on TV one of these days in the future, so we're so proud of you. We have treats for them, right, Dr. Vine?
Yeah, actually, Dr. Morrison, would you do me a favor and take that green bin, and as kids leave today, they can each take a couple things?
Sure.
Thank you so much, appreciate that. That's on behalf of the board, just a small token of congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations, for sure. Moving on to the second set of recognitions, we would like to congratulate, the congratulations go out to the South Middle School and Thomas Middle School cross-country teams that participate in the state meet.
And again, if I call your name and you're here, if you'd please stand. From South Middle School, Pierce Baker. Tommy Childs. Brady Connors. Owen Gottfried. Dylan Hannah. Ty Hoakes. Alan Malikowski. Andrew Morris. Hazel Nadal. Cameron Nemec. Edgar Pagnota. Jacob Samuels. And Connor Sheehan. And we have our coaches from South, if you would come forth, Dave Frittner, Tyler Stordahl, and Sophia Vassos.
All right, so thank you for inviting me here tonight. Unfortunately, Dave and Sophia could not make it, but I just wanted to give one more round of applause for all of our athletes that participated in State. They did a fantastic job. And I'm just gonna speak a little bit, but first, we have a video that we'd like to, to show. All right, so as you can see in that video, they did fantastic this season. I'm first gonna talk about our individual qualifier on the girls' team, Hazel Nadal. She ran fantastic at State and at Sectionals. She placed sixth at Sectionals and was our only individual qualifier for State. Even though she was our only individual qualifier, our girls' team did very, very well. It was a really tough sectional, they were fifth overall, but they were only 12 points behind second place. So it was very, very, very close. Any other year, they probably would've made it. So onto the boys, I wanna recognize Owen Gottfried for being All-State. He was 12th overall in the state competition, so round of applause for Owen. And at Sectionals, our boys placed first by almost 50 points, so it was a, it was a pretty, pretty big lead that they won by. When we went down State, they had some pretty lofty goals, and they went out and they fought for it. They raced as hard as they could on that course, and for a while, we weren't quite sure what we were gonna come out with, and we managed to come out with third, only about 12 points behind second place. So, they did very, very well. I also wanted to point out some of our sixth graders that made it onto our state team this year, Cameron Nemec and Dylan Hannah. They were, round of applause. They were our top two sixth graders on the boys' team, and Cameron was the top sixth grader at State, and Dylan was the third sixth grader at State overall. So another round of applause for those two. All right, so I just wanted to recognize not only the amazing accomplishments of these athletes, but also the hard work and effort that they've put in throughout the season, the countless workouts and miles they put in to achieve what they went out to achieve this season. They set the bar high for themselves, they know that here in Arlington Heights, the cross-country program and track typically does pretty well, and they, they wanted to set that bar high, keep it high, and their hard work paid off, they accomplished that goal. And I, lastly, I just wanna recognize the parents for all that they do as well. They help out a lot during the season, especially with State, so I just wanted to say thank you to them for all that they do, because it wouldn't be the same, and we wouldn't be able to do it quite like we do without them. So thank you, parents, as well. All right, thank you.
Thank you. And with the following state participants from Thomas, please call when I read your name. Sophia Donner. Sophia Dusky. Nora Eitz. Etta Fisher. Anya Hong. Alexa Eisenstark. Alexandra Kopax. Ann Park. Francesca Scala. Catherine Smithson. And Clara Vincent. And we'd like to invite our Thomas coaches up front, Becky Fano, Joe Kim, and Todd Slawinski.
We also have a video, if you guys wanna play the video.
I didn't think that video would be so funny, but... First of all, we'd like to thank the board and all of the district administration, the building administration, and especially our parents for all of their support throughout the season. None of this would've been possible without them, so thank you. It's, it's been a pleasure coaching this group of girls since very early in the season. They've been very motivated and dedicated and had a very specific goal in mind to, to make it to State and to compete at a high level at State. And they've been focused, and they worked hard all season, and it was great to see their hard work pay off in the end. We have a great group of eighth-grade girls who really led the team and set the tone for the younger girls. So thank you, eighth-grade girls, for all of your leadership over the last couple of years. It's been a pleasure watching you grow, and best of luck to you as you go on to run or do whatever you do in high school. So, the, the team was a really competitive team, they, they won their sectional really easily, and I know the girls all, as we went to the state meet, were trying to figure out where they fell, and I don't think we ever thought we were gonna win, because we got second place by 119 points. But I think we had the best outcome possible, I think everyone ran their hardest at State, and we had the, the best meet we could. We finished second place at State. Alexa Eisenstark was a fourth-place finisher at State, which is really impressive, so great job, girls. We also just wanna point out that, you know, although there's only 11 girls here being honored for their accomplishments, these girls represent a much larger team and community of runners who have worked hard all season. We had over 130 athletes who came out every day and worked hard and had fun and enjoyed it, and so, you know, thanks to these girls for representing that group tonight. And we really look forward to continuing the success and hopefully being again here, back here again next year with the sixth and seventh graders and the team, and hoping that the boys can be able to join us then as well. So thank you, guys.
That was so great to see the, both the slide shows. We, as a board, we saw, first and foremost, the amount of fun you have out there, it's amazing, we love seeing the smiles, and your resilience and your goal orientation, it is, we're extremely proud of you, so congratulations to all of you who are acknowledged today.
And athletes and coaches and parents, you're of course welcome to stay, but you're also welcome to head out and celebrate. Please grab a couple of appreciation gifts from the board, from Dr. Morrison, on your way. Thank you very much. Don't forget your trophy. As our impressive young people head out, I'd like to move on to our next recognition. Today is Illinois School Board Members Day, November 15th, 2022. We wanna thank, on behalf of the staff and students and community, all of our school board members for volunteering and supporting public education, and for your commitment and contribution to our public schools, our students, and our community. This year's School Board Members Day theme is Partners in Excellence. You definitely have been partners and leaders in excellence here in District 25. We have a certificate of appreciation at your place, and I think you also have a card of appreciation from the Teachers Association. So again, we wanna thank you for your collective work on behalf of our community. You spend a lot of time above and beyond as volunteers, and thank you, and congratulations, and we hope you get a lot of appreciation on School Board Members Day today, so thank you so much.
As board president, I have to say, I am so humbled and honored to serve with these fine folks on my side, so it is truly an honor. Thank you, Dr. Vine. We will now move on to recognize our veterans, and District 25 is so thankful for our many parents, staff, and board members who serve us in our community and who have also served in the armed forces, where are in school on Veterans Day, so when that happened, it was great, there were, there's a great video we're gonna watch soon, but our students all across the district were acknowledging our veterans as well, and so we can all celebrate them together. And at tonight's board meeting, we'd love to share this video with you, and it's definitely a must-see video. Yes?
Yes.
Yes, please, Adam, thank you.
And for me, I get choked up about it, because I met so many great people, lost a lot of great people, but as a family, you never lose, you never lose. As a combat veteran, that, we relied on each other, and at times, you say, "I can't do this, I can't do this," but then you look, it's not "I," it's "we." "We can do this."
It doesn't matter who we are, where we come from, we all come to unite, become a team, to, for a purpose.
When you go into the military service, you change from an "I" to a "we." Before I went into the Army, I talked about myself, I talked about my car, I talked about my girlfriend, I talked about this. When you go into the service, you learn very quickly that you depend on all the people around you, the people to your right, left, front, back, all the people, and it becomes a "we."
When you think you're down, and you say, "I can't make it," everybody else around you is the skull, "We can do this, we can do this, we can accomplish this."
The biggest thing I have about taking back is learning a lot about different countries that we've, that I've visited, the way of life, the people, it's not all bad out there. Serving in the Army, it's, you've given time that you'll never get back. I was married when I was in the, in the service, had two kids while I was in the service. Leaving them back here, going to do my job, then coming home, it was rough.
We are you, and you are us, just a few decades apart, because in the United States, the military is the civilians or the citizens of our country. It's always been that way, citizen soldiers.
Anytime you see a veteran walking down the street, you'll say to him, you may say, "Welcome home," or you go, "Hi, brother," or "Hi, sister," and it's meaningful, it's touching to them and to me.
One thing I would ask on veterans, actually anytime, there's a group of veterans who served during Vietnam. When we all got out of the service and we came home, we didn't get a very warm welcome. In fact, it was pretty nasty at times, and so as a member of the Vietnam Veterans of America, we have a motto there that says, when you meet a Vietnam veteran, you say the two words that that veteran didn't hear when they came home, and that's "Welcome Home." So if your students should meet a Vietnam veteran, say "Thank you for your service," that's wonderful, but remember, say the words "thank you" and "welcome home," and that will touch their hearts something fierce, that'll just really reach into their soul and really make them feel appreciated.
Thank you for your service and welcome home.
Thank you for your service and welcome home.
Thank you for your service and welcome home.
It's my honor serving.
That was really a touching video, and the message of "I" become, becoming "we," and that's really touching. And our own board members, Rich and Scott, we thank you for your service to our country. And not only have you served our country, now you're back and you're serving our community as volunteers, so it truly means a lot. So, thank you so much. We will now move on to board member updates. And before I go, I'm going to open the floor up to my colleagues. If there are any updates from our colleagues, we'd love to hear.
Madam President?
Yes, Greg.
Well, we didn't have a meeting in October, so quite a bit has happened in the last six weeks. So, to keep it brief, I mean, October is a great month in our schools, and as a parent, I had an opportunity to participate in a number of things, at Patton, the movie night, the pumpkin patch. But one district-wide thing, when we participated in the trunk or treat, which is just a great event held by the Park District, and I want to give a shout-out to the South Student Council, who worked with Dr. Vine and Dr. Morrison, putting together decorations and treats. And it's great to see Scott was there as well, and Aneisha. But a great way to connect with our community at just a really celebratory time for the kids, of course. And then, the other thing that, you know, that happened in October, we had parent-teacher conferences, and I just wanted to express, as a parent and also as a board member, gratitude to all our teachers for their time and energy. They compile lots of information for us when you go in and speak to them, give us a personalized look at what our children are doing in their classrooms. So, really, again, thank you to them for all their work.
Thank you. And as I recall, Dr. Vine did a lot of quality checks of the candy that day at trunk or treat, so.
It was all good, safe.
Safe candy to eat. Thank you, Greg, for that. Any other updates? Just a quick update that I have in addition to what Greg shared is that I'd like to acknowledge Dr. Vine and Brian, my colleague here, our board member Brian, who went to a global service project and represented District 25. And so, we'll hear more about this report, but that was really amazing, and thank you for representing us. And a quick other note, I've been invited to join with area school board presidents on a monthly basis. So, I meet with area school board presidents across the northwest suburbs, and it's been so great to meet with them and learn from what they're doing well and kind of share ideas. And so, I've been really appreciative of that opportunity. Moving on, we'll go to Ed Redd and Rich, if you could share.
Yeah, just two brief updates. One, as you know, the elections were recently done. Some candidates won, some candidates lost. You decide where you fell in that kind of area there. From a legislative session, though, we now fall into the fall veto session, so the legislators start back in office looking at all the vetoes that were there. But probably, since there's an alignment, at least in ideology, probably not a lot of vetoes will come out of that particular piece there. The other area is Lana had sent out a note. January 23rd is the Ed Redd Dinner, so, and it's easy to remember, January 23 of '23. So, if you have an opportunity to go, please see if you're available. That's all I have, unless Stacy has anything else.
Okay, thank you, Rich. Moving on, we'll go to IASB, the Illinois Association of School Boards. And this week, we're going to be spending time away from our families to be with school board members across the state of Illinois for a weekend of learning. And we're very looking forward to that, and lots of planning has gone in. So, again, I want to thank Lana, who helps coordinate all the conferences and everything, all the presentations we're going to be going to, and all my colleagues who are going to be learning and benefiting from that. And actually, our own District 25, we are going to be presenting. We have been invited to present the carousel of panels, and our session will be on Saturday from 1:45 to 3:15, I believe that is, and will be, our session is called Strategic Plan and Opportunity Roadmap for All Students. So, we're going to look forward to presenting there. And so, a lot of work went into that presentation from my board and all the input, Dr. Vine, Dr. Kay. So, thank you to all of you for all the input that went into that presentation, and hopefully, it will benefit other school board members that attend. And so, we're trying to make it as helpful as possible. Another note, as far as IASB goes, is that at IASB, there's a delegate assembly. And I, as a reminder to my board colleagues, the IASB delegate assembly will be held this Saturday, and the board has received the 2022 recommendations and report. And I just want to say, at this point, are there any questions or comments about the recommendations that we could kind of have that discussion if we need to?
Madam President?
Yes, Greg.
I know you had asked us to then submit our, you know, support or oppose on those resolutions, and I thought there were a couple that were, I deferred from the committee's recommendations, and I thought worth sharing here. And then, if there were follow-on comments, we could discuss those. So, the first one, the fund balances Miller Ratio Adjustment. And I know my colleagues are familiar with what this is based on the committee's recommendation, but the Miller Ratio says that a school fund is not to exceed two times the fund's average annual expenditures from the previous three years. And thank you, Stacy, for providing information. I'd ask some clarifying questions. And so, thinking about us locally, the resolution was asking that IASB pursue maybe extending for school districts three times limit. And based on the information Stacy shared, I just, you know, the idea is to, that district wouldn't carry so much of a fund balance and be irresponsible with public funds. And based on our experience here locally, that seems excessive, three times. And so, right now, I'm going to submit that we do not adopt my recommendation. I can go on with my other ones, or should I pause?
Yes, go for it, unless there's discussion on that particular one. And again, these are just your personal recommendations, right?
Then my personal ones, correct, correct. The other one where I deferred from the committee's recommendation was the firearm dealer location. And what that one was suggesting that there was to extend and amend the current law so that, right now, the law says that a firearms dealer or a vendor that sells firearms or ammunition cannot be within 500 feet of a school, and they're suggesting to extend that, the resolution was suggesting to extend that to 1,500 feet. And the resolutions committee was suggesting we should not adopt that. So, for me, again, thinking locally, what would that mean in our community? Well, right now, looking at our schools and just getting on Google Maps, 500 feet, we're fortunate we have a lot of neighborhood schools. It really, there's no easy way a vendor would ever be within 500 feet, I think, of, again, just through my own research. But when you extend, when you start looking further out, could 1,500 feet, you know, be meaningful? Then it's, some of our schools, it could. In particular, if you think about Ivy Hill, North Point, again, could be within or impacted, like what vendor might show up in North Point. Or if you look at Greenbrier, in that strip mall where Barnaby's is, is again, kind of at that 1,500-foot radius. And then, even, and south is a little more, like Francesca's would be like 1,500 feet. So, what I saw is, we have a number of schools where at least I would, I would not want those to be within that radius, or what would easily be a six or seven-minute walk from those schools. So, my recommendation is to adopt that resolution.
Okay, thank, sorry, go ahead.
I just have one more, and it's really quick. The number seven, the Mandates Review Committee, the committee's recommendation is to adopt that resolution. And I'll just say briefly, I found it problematic that the resolution suggested there be an automatic, I'm sorry, what's the word, automatic sunset provision. And I think if you're going to have a mandate review committee that's going to be going over those, that then to just have a automatic sunset provision, I don't think that's consistent with a committee that's going to be reviewing anyway. So, that is really my issue. If that were to come out in a future version, I would support it, but right now, my recommendation is do not adopt.
Okay, thank you, Greg, for your input. Any other input? Go ahead, Rich.
The only one, maybe just to comment in the spirit of how Greg was commenting, is number eight, the financial contribution for school board elections. So, they are the committee recommended, do adopt that, and I'm opposed to that. Just to recollect, in that particular position, what they're saying is that any position going for a school board should not have the means to have outside funds, meaning you have to stay, whether it be PAC or really any outside funds from whatever funds you have. And to me, this goes against, you know, what, as a country, we stand for in the sense of, how can you potentially, you know, a person of maybe limited means may not have the financial ability to even try to run without additional support. So, to me, I think that's absolutely limiting versus trying to expand the particular view of what they're trying to get at. So, I would oppose that wholeheartedly, saying, hey, that's against what we kind of are out there for. It's trying to get more people to run for positions, and, you know, if that means getting sources from mom and dad, you get dollars from mom and dad to help you run. Because this committee or this contribution would say, you can't take, can't get money from mom and dad.
My understanding was you could get it from individual donors, but not PAC or groups?
Even in individual donors, you have to recommend, you know, think about the laws of the state, right? So, you have to be able to identify within there. They're saying, no, you can't take any funds from anything. So...
So, okay, so that was your understanding. So, when I go to the resolutions, I'm sure we'll hear more about that. I understood it a little bit differently. But thanks for noting your position on that. Any others? Okay, with the number three, I also voted a little bit differently, the firearm dealer location, and Greg kind of mentioned it. Based on just my reasoning for the firearm dealer location, just with the tragedies we've seen in schools, and the most recent one that has affected our area in Highland Park, for me, I support increasing the distance between schools and firearm dealer locations. So, that's one that I did differently. So, I wanted to be sure I let my colleagues know. So, if seeing no other input on this, I would ask that my board colleagues submit your input via the papers that were on your desk. And what I will do is, I will submit our board's consensus recommendations. I'll tally it up at the delegate assembly, and you will also get, there will be a copy for viewing as to how I voted on behalf of our board. Okay?
One question?
Yes.
On the election?
Yes, Chad.
So, you say, "Support, oppose." Is that to what the committee's recommending?
No, what you're, what Chad's saying.
Just making sure I'm understanding, because I read that.
Yeah, it should be easier. It should be easier this time. You're supporting or opposing the resolution.
Okay, just want to make sure.
The committee's just informational and issue care. Not even there. Yeah, last, yeah, just go with what Chad is saying. And of course, you guys, the IASB sent a video, a whole report on each of the resolutions, so lots of information there. So, that's a good clarifying question, because last year, we were a little confused. So, thank you, IASB, for kind of making it simpler. Moving on, we are going to go to NSSEO with our friends. Scott, you going to report it?
Yes, I'll be brief. We had our bingo night in October, and it was a great evening over at Arlington Aisle House. Aneisha showed up. We had a great time playing bingo. Unfortunately, we didn't win any games, but we did win some silent auction prizes. So, that was a wonderful event. It was great. We raised $14,500 for the students and parents of NSSEO to help programs for families that are members of NSSEO or attend those schools. So, great night, a lot of fun to be together with this board and also with the boards that also feed into NSSEO. As well, it's kind of hitting the ground running, looking for a national search for the new superintendent to replace Dr. Hackett for NSSEO. She had a great career, and now it's trying to fill those shoes that she is going to be leaving somewhat reluctantly. I think she's, she's, you know, they're pulling her out. But it's time for her to move on, and it's a great opportunity for us as a board to go through that process. And it's also something that we're taking very seriously, and it's a lot of work. So, looking forward to updating the board as we move on with that process. So, stay tuned.
Thanks a lot, Scott. Those are big shoes to fill, Dr. Hackett's shoes, big shoes to fill, the impact that she has had as a transformative leader in our area for NSSEO. And as far as bingo night, I was so surprised, Scott, the huge turnout of that evening, and the NSSEO Foundation and parents did such an incredible job. So, what an active foundation board, as well as what you and Gina and other board members do to support NSSEO. So, thank you again for that. Okay, we are going to move on to community input. And I want to say, before I read the statement for the community input, that our board is truly all about community input, not just at board meetings. I want to remind our community that our district, when you email the board members, you will always get a response. When you email our superintendent, sometimes I wonder if she sleeps because she will respond very quickly and direct you where you need to go. So, at any point, whenever there is a concern, you don't have to wait for the school board meeting. Pick up the phone, email. We're always here. We will always respond. And we're here to support our community and always have that open communication. So, phone, email, and the board coffees, too. So, there's lots of board coffees. We always love guests coming to our board coffees as well. But at this point, I will read our guidelines for the community input. And so, the opportunity to speak to the board is provided for members of the public who have a comment to make about the business of the board. The board appreciates hearing from stakeholders and values your thoughts and questions. And as the board strives to make the best decisions for the district, public input can be helpful. In order for the board to reserve sufficient time to conduct its business and to operate its meeting in the spirit of civility and decorum, speakers are expected to follow the following guidelines. Number one, address the board only at the time provided on the agenda and only after being recognized by the board president. And number two, identify yourself and be brief. Your comments must be limited to a maximum of three minutes. The board may shorten this allowed time in order to conserve time to allow the maximum number of people the opportunity to speak. And please be respectful and courteous. As you've all heard, we're all volunteers. And so, and the board requests that you not make statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to members of the board or our staff. And the board typically does not respond to comments or attempt to answer questions during the public comment period, but we do listen intently and appreciate the input from our community. Okay, Lana Dewey, thank you for the blue sheets. So, Ms. Cruz, you're the first one up tonight.
Sheila Cruz. What precipitated a call to the public consulting group out of Boston to spend over $70,000 for an audit of the books at District 25 schools? Prior to 2020, were you having issues with kids not finding books that represented their community? Were you taking complaints from parents that there is just not enough diversity or sex in the curriculum? With over 83,000 books across the elementary buildings, PCG only audited 60 books for each grade, 60 cherry-picked books from about 300 that were suggested to them for the audit. What kind of audit is that? December 2021 K-8 Curriculum Equity Audit Findings and Recommendations Report. Check it out. PCG was laser-focused on the number of white authors and whether characters in the books were being negatively stereotyped. In other words, PCG was looking at the curriculum from a CRT perspective only. Seriously? You paid for a CRT audit when your academics are failing so miserably. It's bad enough that going into the e-learning scheme of 2021, your schools were already failing, but now that the 22-school report card is out, you're an embarrassment to every taxpayer. Illinois Assessment Readiness Test, less than 50% of the students are within target range. The Dynamic Learning Maps Assessment The Dynamic Learning Maps Assessment indicates a whopping 80% are below target range. The Illinois Science Assessment has your schools at 47% achieving performance levels. And the federal Every Student Succeeds Assessment Test, which is science, math, English, results your schools 44% proficient. Wow. You knew that was happening, and who do you blame? You blame the teachers. No wonder there is a shortage. Instead of teachers embracing their profession, they were subjected to reeducation lessons to the tune of several thousand dollars, paid to another consultant, to replan every lesson to incorporate the concept of racism. Your main focus is CRT and DEI, but I will draw the connection between the politics of 20 and the Illinois Department of Education's mandated emergence to teach kids about sexuality using graphics and lesson plans for grades K to 8 and the incorporation of CRT and DEI, two lexicons that never existed before. Your decision to go full speed ahead with these issues at the expense of teaching our kids how to be critical thinkers, how to challenge science, how to read simple verbiage that they identify with appropriate for their grade level, and how to prepare them for the next grade level is shameful. And you risked all this by offending teachers and parents and the community in your process. Will you return to accepting books for their content and not by the color of the author's skin? Will you recognize you've been a pawn in the political echo chamber? Will you stand up for the once noble profession of teachers? What is the future of District 25 if it has lost its moral compass? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next guest today is Kristen Erman. Kristen, do we have you here? Okay, sorry.
Kristen Erman, you found?
Yes.
I'm here speaking tonight in response to comments made at the last few meetings and also this one. My name is Kristen, and I am a mother of two elementary-age children. I am here to voice support of diversity of literature and trust in our librarians to choose appropriate materials for our school libraries. I work in healthcare. I treat adults of all genders and all people regardless of socioeconomic status, race, or education level, or political belief. I share my career choice with you because these experiences have positively impacted my belief system. When you have suffered a stroke or an accidental brain injury, you are just a person who needs other people to care for you. I am here to say that I will care for all of you. I want my children to grow up the same way, caring for all people regardless of any physical, mental, racial, or educational difference. The best way to raise a society that feels cared for and that cares for the others amongst us is by different experiences and exposure to a variety of walks of life. Sheltering children is not the answer. If your belief system is so strong that you want a narrow worldview, please utilize one of the many private religious institutions in our town for your family. Our public schools need to remain diverse in all aspects. Censorship and book banning are a slippery slope. I learned this from the books that I was exposed to in my advanced placement English classes here in Arlington Heights in high school. The human experience is complicated. Life is not simple. Use diversity as an opportunity to have family discussions around your dinner table about your own family's history and belief system. If having books in our libraries that educate or expose a variety of different human experiences, including gender and racial diversity, save even one child from feeling excluded or feeling suicidal, it will be worth it. Transgender children do not feel suicidal because they are transgender, it is because they feel not supported in their gender identity. Teach your children your family beliefs at home. Please, I implore you, keep our public education systems open to all members of the public. Do not subscribe to censorship. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker for public comments is Renee Schleinhardt. Renee, are you here?
Hey, guys. Thank you, guys, so much for what you do. I do realize that it is a voluntary position and that you guys give up a lot of your time to do this, and I really am thankful. And I do want to comment about the veterans' appreciation that you guys do. You guys just really improve it year after year. And I'm thankful, because my dad's actually here, and he's a vet. And he also got to participate in one of, a couple of the breakfasts. And my son's grandfather, who sadly passed away, that was one of my son's favorite moments, was doing a breakfast with him a few years ago. So really appreciate the care that you guys put into that and the emphasis that you bring into the kids and, you know, on the people who served our country. Just wanted to add a short, brief comment about my experience as a parent coming back into the district with my son, who's in fifth grade. The concern that I just wanted to share tonight, and I've spoken directly with his teacher, he's a great, great guy, and my son is doing well in his classroom. My concern is I don't have very much visibility into what he's doing. I can't really tell how he's performing. I can't really, I don't get to see a lot of work that comes home, and I don't expect a folder full of work, but I do have a frame of reference from when my daughter was in fifth grade. And it's been a few years, she's in high school now and doing really great, thanks to D-25. And I just see a difference, and it's marked. And I'm used to having visibility. I'm not one to check his homework every single day. I do tell him, you know, I do work with him to make sure that he does it. He doesn't bring much home, but my concern is that I can't tell what he's learning. There's multiple apps that I'm supposed to go look into. One of them can't even be accessed when he's not on school grounds, and so then I don't even have a window into the content that he's looking at. That's a concern for me. You know, parents should always be able to see the actual content of what their kids are learning. So just wanted to express that area of concern for me. I don't get the impression that the teachers are getting a lot of input into that either. I don't know the changes over the last two years. I can only compare, you know, his last experience in private the last two years. And to the point about public schools versus private, I brought him back into the district because I understood it to be a quality district. And if I could have the tax dollars to send him to private, that would be great, too. But that's just not the case here. So I hope you guys are open to, you know, our inputs and our concerns when we bring them to the table. And thank you, guys, very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Melissa.
Melissa Kerr speaking. The second installment of the Cook County Property Tax Bill is now online, cookcountytreasurer.com. They are going to be due December 30, 2022. If I pay it tomorrow, when will School District 25 get the money?
Okay, thanks for that question, Melissa. Dr. Biden, we'll get back to you.
And do not increase my property tax bill. Decrease expenses and decrease property taxes. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kevin Michael.
Good evening, everyone. My wife and I have two students here in District 25. I want to thank you all for what you do. I want to share that I am grateful that the teachers, administrators, and Board of Education in District 25 respect and understand the importance of diversity in our schools and our community. At the September 27 Board of Ed meeting, some residents shared inaccurate and, in some cases, harmful misinformation related to race and gender identity when making their public comments. First of all, I would like to state for the record that I trust the teachers and the librarians in District 25 to make informed and responsible choices when it comes to the books that children can access. And I see nothing wrong with the books about which parents raised objections at the previous meeting. Educators are professionals, and we should respect their judgment. So thank you for respecting your teacher's judgment. Secondly, teaching about race and racism is not critical race theory. Children's books about race and skin color are not CRT books. There is no CRT being taught in any elementary schools in Arlington Heights or anywhere in the U.S., for that matter. When people raise concerns about CRT in schools, they are parroting a political talking point pushed by people whose agenda has nothing to do with protecting children and everything to do with sowing division. We can't embrace diversity while ignoring history, so thank you for respecting the true history of our country. Thirdly, at the last meeting, a member of the community shared some statistics about transgender people during his comments, and he came close to understanding the point of the data but missed the mark. Trans people are not more likely to die by suicide because they are trans. They are not less successful in life because they are trans. Trans people experience these unfortunate circumstances because of anti-trans discrimination. They are often bullied, excluded, mocked, and even thrown out of their homes by their families. Teaching our children and community that trans people exist and deserve our respect is a step in correcting and reducing the number of suicides and negative societal impacts in the trans community. Children of different, excuse me, children of different races exist in our community and in all communities. LGBTQIA+ children exist in our community and in all communities. And they deserve to know that they are as loved, valued, and respected as any other kids in the D-25 and Arlington Heights community. District 25 promotes inclusivity, diversity, and equity, and the majority of district parents not only appreciate this about the district, we expect it from the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Withero, the, you know, the content that is distributed at board meetings needs to be appropriate, and so...
This is, this is content that was distributed to my children on their children's Chromebook in your school, so I'd like to make my comments.
So with your comments, if you could not show the visuals?
I won't.
Thank you.
That's exactly why I did it. I made sure the camera won't be able to see it either, because it's not appropriate.
Okay, thank you, Ms.
Withero. Yep, thank you. Can we start the timer?
Yes. Do I want to turn on the timer? Did you restart it?
Thank you. Good evening. I'm here with a number of parents and community members at the advice of the Arlington Heights Police Department. I provided a package of printed materials for you. I'd not be surprised if you couldn't make it through all of the pictures and pages. I personally did not either. On District 25 computers issued by this district, two children ages eight years and older bookmarked pages exist for children to explore. Every school has an LMC page with common links, search engines, and materials for children to look at. Self-guided exploration is now part of the curriculum. It's called personal learning, or PL. Six of the nine schools in this district featured search engines that provided the results that you see when basic searches occurred, words that I've heard in public comments tonight twice. While I'm upset that my child and all children were being needlessly exposed to the sexual comment, content, I'm not here for that reason. District 25 has been very quick to inform parents about possible issues that may affect our students and our children. I get day of emails from Dryden when ambulance is at the school to let us know so we're ready to discuss that with our children when they come home. The district has proactively sent stranger danger warnings to us as parents at the beginning of the year, as well as whenever there's any suspicion around schools. The district is also quick to email all parents and offer mental health support when one of your students was hit by a car near a school. So what I'm here tonight to understand is why you have not communicated this error and oversight to parents. Student Chromebooks access this content. A parent reached out to a member of the Arlington Heights Police Department. That officer notified a school resource officer in your district, and that school resource officer contacted the IT department. Security protocols were tightened on all the computers so that kids can no longer access that content. This district knew that they had an error. Why was the district so quick to respond but not quick to let the parents know of the issue so that we could take the action to have the conversation at home with our children? I think the district owes parents some answers. What happened in early November when the team was informed by the school resource officer? Who in the district was made aware about the ability for children to access the material? Was the board notified? Did you have the ability to see what students were exposed? Those kids that were exposed, have those parents been notified? Why has the district been so slow to send an email to all parents to share the issue, offer resources and support, partnership, and build trust? What are you doing to ensure this isn't going to happen again on my child's laptop? Trust remains a challenge for this community and many parents these days. We trust you, we want to trust you that this was just an error. We want to trust you that many are in the room, were probably not aware of this. And we want to trust that processes were put in place to ensure it will never happen again. But despite our desire to trust, the silence of the district that is historically quick to communicate with parents speaks loudly here. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next, so our next speaker is Ms.
Hello, my name is Elizabeth Pizzoza. I wasn't preparing to talk tonight, but my daughter came from home from school with a book from the library, and it was a little disturbing. I don't believe in coincidences. I think everything happens for a reason. But when she came home with this book, we always read our books from the library every night, you know, at night before bed. We took it out this weekend to read, and I asked, I asked her why she picked this book. I always ask her why she picks the book. And she said she liked the pictures in the front, she thought all the girls were pretty, and she liked the title. And I asked her why she liked the title, and she said, because sometimes she feels small. So I read the book first. I like to screen books first. And this book is teaching her how to protest, and I'm not okay with that. She's six. I have two daughters at Ivy, one who is six and one who is eight, which I also believe this is not appropriate for them to be learning about. They are too young. Protesting is not, it is something you learn as you age, it is something you learn when you are much older to understand what it means and what it is for, and this is not. This is not for a six-year-old or an eight-year-old. It talks about how you can go to the Capitol Building. There are political signs in here that are, I, I don't think are appropriate. I think there is a time and a place, and there is an age appropriateness, especially for books that kids come home with. This is not one, and it makes me not trust what's going on in the library and what is available to them. There is a lot of bullying going on in our school in specific. I think that needs to be at a forefront. We had an assembly, and I asked my kids what they learned in the assembly, and they couldn't tell me much. They told me they read a book, they were, they had to skip recess for this, actually, so they didn't get time outside to get their energy out. They were able to stomp their feet and clap their hands at certain moments when it was appropriate to, but they couldn't tell me much about the assembly, which is a disappointment. I think that's awful, and I think that needs to be looked at, and this needs to be taken seriously, because this is not okay.
Thank you. Okay, we're now going to move on. Thank you for your input. We're going to be moving on to communications from our district partners. And if, Nicole with the PTA, you're up for a report. Thank you.
This may be my longest report ever, because I have so much to say tonight. So, good evening. The Arlington Heights Council of PTAs has been hard at work this fall. We celebrated the many accomplishments of each We celebrated the many accomplishments of each of our units at the Northwest Cook Region Annual Meeting. Our council took home 12 awards in the following categories: inclusivity, membership attainment, adaptive planning, and leadership. I cannot thank each of our units enough for all they do throughout the school year. Volunteers really make dreams for children a reality. The Arlington Heights Council of PTAs also awarded $10, $100 gift cards to the Arlington Heights Park District for our Design Hour Guide Elementary Scholarship Contest. Congratulations to Anna D. from Ivy Hill, Erin Shiloh D. from Ivy Hill, Avi C. from Dryden, Vivy N. from Dryden, Tyler N. from Thomas, Hadley D.J. from Westgate, Cara K. from Patton, Carter K. from Patton, Maggie M. from Olive Mary Stitt, and Shay M. from Olive Mary Stitt. We hope each of our recipients enjoy their program. We also wanted to share that we held our annual high school scholarship fundraiser, Pack the Piggies. We exceeded our district goal and collected $9,111.25. Special thanks to Jody Schaaf for coordinating the entire fundraiser. We couldn't have done it without her. Thank you to all of the building administrators who for collaborating with us and for being willing to be duct taped to walls, pied in the face, sprinkled with color, and a whole lot more. We would also like to thank everyone who contributed to the fundraiser. We cannot wait to provide nine scholarships to local high school seniors in the spring. Last but not least, we have elected a president-elect for AHC, Megan Worthington, who is right here to my right. So, she is currently serving her second year on the Patton PTA Executive Board as president. And she is going to continue until June and then come over to AHC. She has volunteered in many capacities. Megan is a true leader, who puts children first and is a friend to many. It has been a pleasure collaborating with Megan this year. I know she will go on to do wonderful things for AHC. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Nicole.
You're welcome.
And I love the Pack Piggies trophy. It's very cool. Thank you, Megan. Okay, ABC 25 Foundation, our very own Gina Faso will be reporting.
Thank you, Madam President. Currently, all of our school liaisons are busy reading and assessing 41 grant submissions that were received from the teachers across all of our schools. And we look forward to finishing up this activity and being able to distribute all kinds of money to our teachers for their creativity, their innovation, and their desire to continue with new ideas in their classrooms. So, more to come on that. In the meantime, switching gears out of passing out the money into fundraising the money, we continue to have our membership drive. Some schools are just a stone's throw away from receiving $2,500 in the school for having the right number of membership. So, look for that in your weekly emails from your principals. And we also have our date set of April 15, 2023, for our Get Verbed Challenge Race. And right now, we are currently collecting from students t-shirt designs, and that collection will continue until December 2. So, if your child has a desire to design a t-shirt for the race, that would be wonderful. You can get more information on either the website or through the school office, or in some cases, even your art teacher may have information on this to be able to pass it out. So, we look forward to seeing you guys all in April as well at the race. And our wonderful DJ.
Yes, DJ Scott. Okay. Thank you so much, Gina, and the ABC 25 Foundation for all your continued support for our community. Next up, we have ATA, Allison Berg.
What was that? Uh-huh. Very official jingling down the hallway. Always sometimes it's just stick it under my armpits if I'm trying to be quiet. Good evening, everybody. I first would like to say exactly what Dr. Bynne already said, but I would like to acknowledge that today is Board Member Appreciation Day. And I wanted to just take a moment to thank all of our board members for the incredibly important work that they do here in District 25. I know that a board member's work is often unappreciated, but we do appreciate your time, your energy, and your continued support. We are grateful to have board members that are involved in our schools and communities and that you are able to bring those experiences to help make District 25 the great place that it is. The community, the students, the teachers, we are all lucky to have you, and we look forward to working with you, together with you, in the future and with your continued support. So, thank you. Okay, really quickly today, I have our two top fives because we didn't have a board meeting in October. And actually, as Greg was talking, there were so many things that happened since October. We had Halloween. We had Veterans Day, just to Windsor's own horn here. We had a great Veterans Day breakfast, which we do at Windsor School for many, many years. And many of our veterans' grandparents came in. We had a parade and a breakfast, and it was awesome. And I don't have pictures of that, but it was very cool. Officer Philippek came by and had some recess time with us the other day, which was unexpected and pretty awesome. He had stickers. The kids loved it. And he may or may not have played a little bit of football during recess as well, which was very awesome. The kids had a great time. So, okay, moving on to Ivy's top five according to the students. This is my favorite slide, actually, of the whole thing. I like the trees, the butterflies, and the toys. This is Eli, and she's a kindergartner. So, I followed up with Ivy to say, do you have like a butterfly garden? Like, what do you have? Nope. Just seeing butterflies just out in nature over at Ivy. And those are the things that she loves about Ivy Hill. I thought maybe there was some secret that I could brag about. But nope, just likes the butterflies, the toys, and the trees. We have a first grader here at Ivy Hill that I like. She's made a lot of friends. This is Claire. She's in first grade. A fourth grader, Philippek. He likes that there are so many different people, and you can have friends from different cultures and that you can always feel included, which is awesome. Ivy Hill is always a place where kids feel welcome and included. I like all the math games that we play. Another fourth grader, which I do have to say, we have so many awesome resources as teachers here in District 25. Building our Math Fact Fluency is one of our latest programs that we've been using in the schools, and the kids love it. So many games. It's like secretly putting vitamins into shakes, right? It's the same kind of theory. So, we have them engaged in these awesome games, and they're learning, and they don't even realize it, which is the best thing for teachers. And finally, I like math in recess. Who doesn't like recess? And that's Noah from Ivy Hill. And then I have one more quick slideshow to showcase Westgate today, the top five from Westgate, the best things about Westgate School according to these students. I love that we get to read fun books in our classroom and in our school library. Westgate is a great place because we have an amazing nurse that takes care of us. I cannot thank the nurses enough for all they do, especially these last couple of weeks. Westgate is great because everyone is welcome. And that's a picture of their opening day at Westgate. They have kind of a neat tradition where they all come out to say the pledge of allegiance and raise the flag together. It's a very cool thing. Westgate's great because teachers will make sure you get what you need, and there are some students playing those very math games that I was just talking about, which is awesome. And Westgate is great because you can be who you want to be. And that's a picture of the Carney Class Charter. Every classroom in District 25 has a class charter right now, thanks to the Ruler Program. We're working on teaching social and emotional health in each classroom, and that's an example of what we have in our classrooms, how we can be calm, happy, invited, unique. Every class has one special for their own classroom that the students work together with their teacher to create to make sure everybody feels welcome in their classrooms. And that is it. So, thank you very much for your time. Have a great night.
Thank you so much, Allison. And Allison, the board wants to say we really enjoyed meeting all our hardworking teachers. So many of working teachers at the social you hosted. Thank you for that.
Thank you for coming. We hope to have another one in the spring with maybe a few more people at it.
Yeah. It was nice to meet with the teachers.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to the consent agenda. This is an action item, and I need a motion, please.
Madam President.
Yes, Greg.
I move that the Board of Education approve those items on the consent agenda as follows: A, personnel report and addendum to personnel report; B, treasures report for August and September; C, invoices; D, public hearing on the budget meeting minutes of September 27, 2022; E, regular and closed session meeting minutes of September 27, 2022.
Thank you. May I have a second, please? Thank you, Rich. Yeah, Lana, could you please call the vote?
Member Olenichak?
Yes.
Member Sheniglia?
Yes.
Member Jogi?
Yes.
Member Scapalato?
Yes.
Member Philippek?
Yes.
Member Faso?
Yes.
Member Conley?
Yes.
Thank you, Lana. We'll go on to the student learning portion with Dr. Becky Fitzpatrick up for assessment report.
Thank you. And as Becky and Amanda and soon Aleni come up, we're going to share a great deal of information with the board tonight through both of their reports and also when we move to the Illinois Report Card. We wanted to give you a lot of information to look at in different ways. We know data doesn't necessarily tell you the story, but it definitely gives you questions that you should ask and helps you decide how to move forward. So, we'll start with our assessment report.
Thank you, Dr. Bynne. Good evening, everyone. I am joined by our assessment coordinator, Amanda Chernick, tonight, along with Dr. Aleni Sparren, who's a senior associate with Ekra Research and Analytics. So, tonight, we will begin by reviewing what information will be presented at District 25 Board Assessment Updates this year before we share a few updates to District 25's assessment plan. After, we will review District 25's performance on the IAR, or Illinois Assessment of Readiness, and the Illinois Science Assessment, or the ISA. Finally, we will look at the data for those students who participated in an academic-focused summer school course before Dr. Sparren provides a more in-depth overview of our Spring 2022 IAR data. And now, I'll turn it over to Amanda.
Good evening. So, the first slide we're looking at tonight is going to provide an overview of what information will be shared going forward at District 25's Fall and Spring Board Assessment Updates. In the Fall, we will share IAR and ISA results from the preceding Spring. This Fall, we will also look at how our students who participated in math or reading summer school classes grew relative to same-grade peers. The data we will present is used to help determine if our students are growing over the previous year and in relation to state standards. The data also helps determine the impact of summer school on academic achievement. At the Spring Assessment Update, we will share MAP growth results for the entire school year as well as how our kindergartners performed on the Fall Kids Assessment. This Spring, we will also look at how students who participated in reading or math intervention and advanced math or reading courses grew relative to same-grade peers. The data we will present in the Spring is used to help determine if our students are growing over the previous school year and in relation to national peers. The program-level data also helps determine the impact of intervention in advanced-level classes on academic achievement. Now that we have more consistent assessment administrations in place, we can settle into more predictable reporting cycles going forward. So, we have a few updates about the assessments District 25 administers this year. First, District 25 moved from FastBridge to AmesWeb Plus for our progress monitoring needs due to the reliability of the platform. Next, instead of administering all three of the COGAP batteries to our third and fifth graders for advanced placement decisions, this year, we only administered the test batteries used for those advanced placement decisions. This means that our third graders were only administered one battery, and fifth graders were administered two batteries. Finally, the fitness program has been canceled by the Illinois State Board of Education for the third consecutive year. The following two slides show the IAR 2021 and 2022 performance data of both District 214 Center districts and the state of Illinois. The Center districts reflect six school districts, including District 25. The blue bars represent the percentage of each district's students, grades three through eight, who are meeting or exceeding the proficiency benchmark in English Language Arts in the spring of 2021, while the red bars represent the percentage of students meeting or exceeding the spring of 2022. Even with slight declines noted in English Language Arts, District 25 continues to perform above the state and local district's average proficiency level. And on this slide, we see that the IAR math performance at District 25 and other District 214 Center districts remain consistent or improved from the spring of 2021. District 25 continues to perform above the state and local district's average proficiency level in math. This next slide shows how our fifth and eighth graders performed on the Illinois Science Assessment during the spring of 2021 and 2022. The light green bars represent the percentage of District 25 students meeting or exceeding the proficiency benchmark in science in the spring of 21, while the dark green bars represent the percentage of District 25 students meeting or exceeding the proficiency benchmark in the spring of 22. As another point of reference, the yellow bar represents the state average proficiency for the spring of 2022. The Illinois State Board of Education cautioned that the data from the 2021 and 2022 ISA administrations are not comparable due to the smaller sample size of the Spring 2021 administration. The 2022 data will be comparable to future exams. This next slide shows the ISA Spring 2022 performance data, including the state average and District 214 Center districts, which, again, is comprised of six school districts, including District 25. The percentage of District 25 students able to meet the proficiency standards on the ISA continues to be on par or exceed the state and other District 214 Center districts. Finally, the following two slides show the growth of our students who participated in reading or math summer school courses compared to students who did not participate in these courses. So, the growth presented here was calculated using District 25's MAP data from the spring of 2022 relative to Fall of 2022. And although the growth effect size for students who enrolled in a summer school reading course last summer lagged slightly behind those who did not participate in a summer school reading course, both groups fell within the expected range. As for math growth for summer school participants and nonparticipants, the growth effect size for students who enrolled in a 2022 summer school math course performed slightly better than those who did not participate in a 2022 summer school math course. So, again, both fell within the expected range.
All right. At this point in time, we'll transition to Dr. Sparren's presentation, where she will provide a more in-depth overview of our Spring 2022 IAR data.
Hello. It's nice to be here again. So, the purpose of my visit is to talk about the state of the district with a focus on the Illinois Assessment of Readiness data. So, we're going to talk about proficiency, how the district is doing in terms of proficiency on the state test, how the district is growing. We're going to take a look at student groups and academic return on investment. So, in terms of academic proficiency, these are your results disaggregated by grade level. Again, on the Illinois Assessment of Readiness, and we are looking at English Language Arts, you can see that overall, about 45% of your students met standards. And again, this is for the state test last year. You can see that grades four, five, and seven were the highest, and it's like grade six came in the lowest. When you take a look at math, overall, you can see that about 45% of the students met proficiency... Excuse me, 48% of the students met proficiency. And you can see that grades three, four, and five actually came in the highest. And there's a little bit of a dip there in sixth grade, and then comes back up again in seventh and eighth grade. Next, we're going to take a look at the historical information. So, here you'll see the historical information for each of the grades going all the way back to the 2015-16 school years. And so, of course, the 1920 school years, the year that the pandemic started, where there was no IAR test. So, really, if you take a look at the purple and the blue bars, you can see that the proficiency rates are down in terms of the grade levels, and some grades actually fared better than others. I would say it looks like fifth grade actually fared better and fourth grade, but still below pre-pandemic levels. And then, when we take a look at math, similar storyline, some grades fared better than others. And... others, and you can see that it looks like 5th grade is actually pretty, pretty much the same as it was with pre-pandemic levels, but still a little bit down from the 15-16 school year. So some, some grades, these are the grade level trends, you can see a little more consistency than, than others. Okay. Next, what we have here is a projection to proficiency slide. So this is using, we, so when we first started our partnership, I think it was around January of last year, perhaps, we actually collected all your historical data, and we used predictive analytics to be able to predict where students will score on the assessment, given their prior history and your local norms. And so this information that you see here is for the ELA portion of the IAR, the state test, last year. Based on where each student started the 21-22 school year, we were able to project for each student a score on the IAR test. So then, we could aggregate that information across students by grade level to predict the proficiency for each of the grades. And so the, the overall projected proficiency for the district on the IAR test was 50%, and that's the number that's in that all row, all the way at the bottom. To the left and the right of that, you'll see one standard error. And so, a district-level goal that the district had set at the start of the year would be to outperform the projected proficiency. And you would know that that has occurred if, at the end of the year, when the state releases the data and we're able to populate the percent that met the benchmark column, that number would be greater than 51%. So you can see that on the English Language Arts portion of the assessment, the district fell a little short there in terms of the projected proficiency, because the 45 is, is not higher than the 51, but the grade-level results do vary. When you take a look at math, you have a different storyline in the sense that the projected proficiency was 41%, and you would know that you've outperformed that if, at the end of the year, when we have the IAR results, it's higher than 42, and in fact, it is, it was 49%. And if you take a look at each of the grade levels, you can see that each grade level actually outperformed the projected proficiency, with the exception of 6th grade, it looks like. To help contextualize the, the state results, it's, it's important to take a look at the state percentile and where the district fares. And so what you see on this slide, this is for both ELA and math. We provide the 2019 information as well as the 2022 information, so you could see where you were before the pandemic. And you can see that for the ELA proficiency in 2019, you were at 59.8%. When you look at how that translates to the, the district's performance compared to all the other districts in the state, you were actually in the 90th percentile, which means that in 2019, on the ELA portion of the test, your district performed the same or better than 90% of the districts in the state of Illinois. When you look at math, the district performed the same or better than 92% of the districts in the state of Illinois. And then, when you take a look at 2022, when you look at the ELA results, you're at 44.7% meeting or exceeding. That falls into the 82nd percentile, so the district performed better than 82% of the districts in the state of Illinois. And that's, that is a decline from where you were in 2019. When you look at math, you're actually at the same place where you were before the district, relative to all the other districts in the state of Illinois. You're at the 92nd percentile. So even though the, the math and the ELA proficiencies have fallen for the entire state, your relative ranking in math has stayed the same. You've lost a little bit of ground, though, in ELA. Okay. So now, we're going to talk about academic growth. And when we started the partnership, again, we collected your historical assessment information, and we built predictive models. And so at the individual student level, and I'll use the example of 4th grade, if I'm in 4th grade, the question is, what standardized assessments did Aleni have to take when she was in 3rd grade in your district? That information, so if it's NWA MAP and the state test, we're going to combine all of those data points for me as a student from 3rd grade, plus your local norms for 4th grade. We're going to then project where I'm going to score in 4th grade, based on my prior history and your local norms. Once I actually take the assessments in 4th grade, we're going to look at, what did I actually score on the assessment, and what did we project for me as a student? So if, if it's different, if I scored higher or lower than what we're projecting for me, that's going to be reflected in my growth score. So that information is used to calculate growth at the individual student level. We standardize that growth score. Once we have growth for individual students, we can then aggregate those growth scores across students in a grade level, programs, for buildings for the entire district. And that information, we color-code it to help with interpretation. And so when you look at the growth scores, there's going to be a color associated with the growth score. When you see the color green next to a growth score, what that means is that the group of students are growing as expected, again, based on where they started the school year and the local norms for the district. If you see blue next to a growth score, we love seeing blue when it comes to growth, because that means that the group of kids is growing higher than expected. If you see yellow or red next to a growth score, that means that the, the group of kids are growing lower than expected. The, we have different thresholds that we use to change the color from green to blue or green to yellow or green to red. And one of the things that we do is we look at the value of the growth score. So we looked at the educational research to say what's considered an educationally-relevant effect size. And that's where those numbers that you see in that aggregate growth threshold come from. The, sort of, the magic number at the group level is a .3. So once the group growth score goes outside of a positive .3 or a negative .3, we start to say, okay, there's enough evidence here for us to change that color from green to blue or green to yellow or green to red. But before we do that, we also do a statistical significance test. So there's two tests that we do before we change the color from green to blue, green to yellow, or green to red. So you don't have to remember all that, but what you do need to know is that the colors help with interpretation. Blue, we love blue, higher-than-expected growth. Green means they're growing as expected. Yellow and red means they're coming in lower than what we've expected. So having said all that, now let's take a look at your English Language Arts, your growth score for the district. That's what you see in the top right there. So we see the color green next to that. So what that means is that overall, across these grades, on the state test, the students are growing at an expected rate, and these are using pre-pandemic growth norms. So I'm going to stop and just say for a moment that that doesn't mean that we're happy with where the kids are on a proficiency level. Just means that, based on where they started the school year, the 21-22 school year, they're actually growing in consistent rates with what they were growing before the pandemic. When you look at the information on this slide, you can see it's disaggregated by grade level, and so you can just quickly scan that growth effect size column to see, did all of the grades grow as expected? And they did, with the exception of 6th grade, where they came in lower than expected. And we also, on this particular slide, do show you what percent of the kids had high growth expected and low growth, because the overall growth score is the aggregate across all of the kids at the grade level. Doesn't mean every single student at that grade level had expected growth, and that's why we show you that. And the, the district and building administrators have the tools to be able to go down and look at that information disaggregated, all the way down to student level. So those are your English Language Arts results, and now let's take a look at math. So when it comes to math, you can see that the overall district-level growth score, again, in that top right, is color-coded blue, which means that overall, the kids actually grew at a higher-than-expected rate on the math portion of the IAR test. That is really great news, and it is something to be celebrated. Again, it doesn't mean we're happy with the proficiency, but they are growing at a higher rate. These are using pre-pandemic growth norms. And I can tell you, because I am part, you know, I'm independent from the district, I'm part of a research and analytics firm, these are not typical results that we did observe across all districts that we work with last year. So kudos to the students and to the teachers and to the administrators. These are great results. And you can even see, when you look at it by grade level, you see that higher-than-expected growth for every grade except for 6th grade, but 6th grade came in, into the expected range. So great results overall for the, for the math growth. Okay. Now let's take a look at student groups. So we're going to start with English Language Arts. And so what you see on this slide is the information that you provide to the state on these student groups, and it's going to be disaggregated. So the first column, the group column, tells us the overall name of the group. The second column, the student group column, tells us the categories that are within the group. You'll see the student count, the percent that are meeting the benchmark, and I'm going to focus on the, the IP students, so where the purple bar, where the purple box is. You can see that the percent of students that are meeting the benchmark on the ELA test for the IP students is 6% compared to 50% of students that don't have an IP. So that's, that's the achievement gap. Some people call that the opportunity gap. It's, it's why we look at these groups. It's, it's in there in just about every district that we work with. So the next thing we want to do, though, is we want to take a look at the growth information to see, is there a growth gap occurring for the students? And the way that you would know that you have a growth gap is if, in the group that's historically underperformed, you see a yellow or a red next to their growth score. And for this group of students, for the students with an IP, you do see that they did not grow as expected, so the concern there for them would be that that percent meeting the benchmark could actually widen, and we don't want that to happen. So we do need to have some more focused efforts for that group of students for the, for the ELA. So now, we'll take a look at math. And again, for math, overall, because you had higher-than-expected growth, there's a lot of pockets of blue or higher-than-expected growth here. If we take a look at your IP students, again, there isn't the proficiency gap. You're going to see that in the percent meeting the benchmark column, so it's that, where you see that 12% compared to 54%. You don't want to see a growth gap, and you don't have a yellow or red next to the IP students. They're growing as expected. You really would ideally want to see blue or higher-than-expected growth. You want accelerated rates of growth for the groups that have historically underperformed, to see evidence that that achievement gap is going to start to close. So those are the student groups. Now let's take a look at your academic return on investment. And when you look at academic return on investment, it is important to quantify the impact that investment is having on student growth, above and beyond what would have happened anyway. And we see that districts oftentimes will ask, how did students in the program grow? The more appropriate question to ask is, how did students in the program grow compared to how they would have grown without the program? And some of the programs that you're looking at, you're going to see now on the next couple slides. So the first one we're going to look at is, we're going to look at that return on investment piece using the ELA growth, again, on the state assessment. And you can see that when you look at the students that received a reading intervention compared to the students that didn't. When you look at the percent meeting the benchmark, there's a difference there, so that tells us that you are placing the right students in a reading intervention. So what you want to do is you want to look in that growth effect size column to see, ideally, you want to see more accelerated rates of growth for the students receiving that reading intervention, so you want to see a blue next to that growth score. They're growing as expected, but again, you want to see some accelerated growth there. And when you look at the students in the Advanced Language Arts courses compared to those that were not, there's lower-than-expected growth for both those groups there. Okay. Now let's take a look at that academic return on investment piece using math growth. And so you can see that students that were in advanced math and those that were not in advanced math, both of those groups grew at higher-than-expected rates. Again, I know that by looking at the, by seeing that blue in that growth effect size column. When I look at students that received a math intervention compared to students that didn't, the students without a math intervention grew at higher-than-expected rates. I know that because of the blue, the students that received a math intervention grew at expected rates, but that number is actually trending very positive. It's getting really close to that positive .3, which is what would trigger that higher-than-expected growth. So it's moving in the right direction. Okay. So to summarize, the district is still performing in the top compared to the other districts in the state. You're in the top 18% for English Language Arts, and you're actually in the top 8% for math compared to other districts across Illinois. Overall, district-level growth is consistent with pre-pandemic norms for English Language Arts, and growth is significantly higher than expected for math. Several student groups have higher-than-expected growth in math, but continued focus is needed to accelerate growth for students with IPs specifically for English Language Arts. Students in reading interventions are growing at expected rates. Accelerated growth rates are needed to provide evidence of that academic return on investment there. The math growth is higher-than-expected for both students in advanced math courses and those not in advanced math courses. Students in math interventions are growing at expected rates, but they are trending higher. So that concludes the, the presentation portion, and I want to open it up for any questions from the board? For either Amanda or, or myself.
Colleagues, any questions? Thank you, Dr. Sparren.
I do have a couple of questions.
Yep.
So can you help just understand, you know, I know the .3, .4, and all those types of things, but if we can go to slide 15. Can you just help me? If, I'm trying to rationalize, you know, very simplistically, positive numbers are always good, negative numbers are bad, right? So how can we have an expected growth with a negative number up in that upper-right-hand column, the overall growth? So how does that work? So how do you, how do you calculate that, the area there?
So we start with the individ, maybe it'll help if I go down to an individual student. So let's say that we're projecting that I'm going to score a 400 on the test, and I score a little bit lower than the 400. If I'm within one standard deviation, I'm going to still have expected growth. So that number could be negative, because maybe I'm getting a 398, so I'm going to have a negative growth score, but I'm still going to be within that expected range. So that's where the, the negative comes from. So you can, as long as you're within that minus .29 and positive .29, the interpretation is the group of kids is growing as expected.
So you're using that just your, one standard deviation is what you're using as your benchmark?
Yep. At the individual student level, and then at the group level, it's like a third of a standard deviation.
Okay. And then, you know, so if we go to slide 16, and I know we said we're, we're happy that everyone had an expected, higher-than-expected growth rate, which is great. How do we rationalize that it's relative, right? So even with this higher-than-expected growth, we don't, we have 49% that met math proficiency. So how do we balance that to say, do we feel good, or do we feel bad? I mean, less than 50% are meeting math proficiency.
So I think when you see the blue growth, because it is a locally-derived value, it is something to be celebrated, but you want that higher-than-expected growth to continue so that you could see that change in proficiency, because that's the only way you're going to see elevated proficiency, is if those growth rates continue at accelerated rates for students that are below proficiency.
Okay. So then, maybe said differently, if, if 100% of my students were in the low growth, I could still have blue numbers?
No. If 100% of your students were in low growth, you would not, you would have a red.
Oh, certainly make that said differently. If 100% of my students were not meeting standards, they were below standards, right? I could be all blue in all categories. For growth.
For growth, yes. That's why growth, growth is the, it's a better way to assess your improvement efforts, because if I'm a student and I'm way below proficiency, it may take me a very long time to get to proficiency, but how do, how do your educators know that what they're doing is having a difference? It's that, are they scoring more than that one standard deviation above where we're expecting them to go, based on where they are? So you can have higher-than-expected growth regardless of where you are in proficiency. You could be a student that's performing very well or one that's way below proficiency.
And I think, you know, part of our overall, you know, push has been to try to get back to standard. So we should hopefully be seeing a lot more blue, based on the investments that we're making through, you know, summer school and all the programs, things of that nature. So. And your assessment is not only doing, combining MAP and IAR, but all the, all the different programs together, or is it only focused on one, one assessment?
The, the growth information is focused on the standardized assessments, so it would be MAP and IAR. But in terms of the programs, as long as you can tag the students in those programs, you can disaggregate that information, yeah.
All right. Can we go to another question on slide 7, then?
7?
7.
Yep.
Just so I understand. So.
Okay.
This is a great view, looking back from 2015. So is this the pri, so all 3rd graders in, so if we're looking at that cohort in that first section there, grade 3, are those just 3rd graders across those years?
Yes.
Okay. So if I look at this, then, again, even discounting 2021 and 20, you know, 20s through 22, if nothing else, we haven't made a huge dent in increasing our proficiency, at least in math. And I would argue, it's probably the same. And if anything, we, we have a downward trajectory. And if anything, we have a downward trend. Again, I'm trying to discount 2022. So again, looking at slide six and slide seven, and this is not necessarily for you, but maybe for the others of why do we see a downward trend in this? Or even a stagnant trend? I mean, we're investing a lot of money in this.
Yes, the other thing that, so if you're, sorry, did you want to go? The other thing that I would, yes, I think what you're saying is that in 2015, 16, you're looking at third grade. Then in 2016, 17, you're looking at them as fourth grade and then fifth graders and sixth graders.
No, no, I think, as if I understand this right, in grade, that cohort in grade three is the result of our third graders every one of those years.
Those are, yes. So where it says grade three, those are all third graders. That's a grade level trend.
Third graders in 2016, then third graders in 2017, then third graders in 2018, right?
So our third graders, so again, if you're looking at those grades, then our student bodies, as they get into those grades, actually the scores are going down or staying the same.
Yeah, the thing that we'd have to look back, so right in grade, if you're looking at grade three, for example, 18, 19, you saw it jump back up to where it had closer in, in the trend towards 2015, 16. Well, we'd have to go back and look for, the board remembers that the test changed several times in the last eight years or so. So we'd have to go look and see was that a change in the, what went from I G A F to I S A T to I A R? And is that comparable? But otherwise, yeah, we would look over, again, they're telling us moving forward, from last year moving forward, they should continue to be comparable. And then we could see same test, same standards, what trend do we see?
I guess again, more, you know, from a board level, when we're looking at outcomes, is this the, the type of outcomes that we want? I mean, you know, especially on slide six, it's probably more dynamic than slide seven. Where you can look at that. And that, again, that's just not saying one thing or a different or not understanding. That's why I'd look to you all to be able to help explain that. But that just seems a little, I would have expected maybe something different. Just, it just seems odd in that area there. I did have another question on slide 23, so let me get there. So if you can, sorry, jump to slide, one on 15, maybe. Looking at slide 23, sorry.
Okay.
I like this type of slides, or both of these, to show programs, things of that nature. But if I were to infer, and maybe help me here, and again, we're looking at different student counts, but the investment that we made in math intervention was less valuable than the no math intervention?
No, I don't think you want to, so the group, the kids in the math intervention are being compared to themselves and other students' grade level peers. So it's starting to trend. And the other thing is, you know, when you look at this information disaggregated by buildings, because it is trending positive, there actually may be some buildings that are seeing high growth for that group.
I don't disagree with that. I'm just looking at, again, looking at an aggregate return on investment. Based on what you're saying, the growth effect size, that's where we should be focused in on. Those that received math intervention grew at a less rate than those that did not receive math intervention.
Yes.
From an purely ROI view.
I think the challenge there, right, is that, sorry, there's a lot of, I think the challenge there for us is we can't compare, we don't have the ability to say, kids were identifying for math intervention. If we didn't give them that intervention, what would their growth look like? We would expect it would be much less if they didn't have.
Not to mention, you're comparing 3,014 kids.
So that's, that's the missing thing from my perspective, is how do we compare students who qualify for support if we don't give them that support?
I don't disagree with that. But that's where, again, what we've been told here is that's done on an individual assessment. So you're already taking into effect that a student that requires or that is in need of intervention will likely have, based on what you've been saying, a lower growth standard. They won't be expected to grow as much as a non-intervented, a non, a student that does not need intervention. Because you're assessing this at the individual level and their individual norms. So therefore, that's already taken into account. And again, I'm not trying to, again, if we're looking at things and presenting information and trying to understand how we're doing and things, then let's make sure we understand what it's showing. And in this case, at least as I interpret it and you're just saying, is the ROI in that line is less than that? Now, again, that's good information. I mean, that's, the key, this is not saying we did something wrong or bad or good. It's good information that now we can go back and assess, okay, is the math, is that program that we're doing in that intervention needing the needs of the student when something, when a different program that a non-intervention stu, yeah, that's a lot of things. So hopefully everyone's tracking what I'm saying here. You know, so it gives us the opportu, I mean, this is great data because now we can look at and say, all right, now we have a true, a true value to see, did that investment in that program help? Before it was maybe anecdotal, it was, you know, yeah, it was great, you know, Suzie felt good and all those types. But here we have facts that would say, maybe we should look at the process of that intervention and tweak it because now we're seeing information that would allow us to reflect on it and go, maybe there's something we should look at it differently.
Yeah, exactly right. So step one is, right, looking at those schools, which schools are blue? And having conversations on why is the math intervention having a higher than expected growth there or at certain grade levels? How is the math intervention having more than expected growth there? And sharing that information. But then, yes, otherwise, looking at that trend, are we seeing that move to blue overall or not?
And I'll just add, I mean, I think you're describing our exact process that we embark on when we have our day-to-days, where not only are we looking at what's happening specifically for individual students, but we're looking at groups of students that are in certain programs. So as Lori was just remarking on, the aspiration is always for the blue. Even seeing a green still prompts us to have conversations about are we right sizing our interventions and resources to move towards the blue? And tweaks are made. That's why we do it three times a year so that we're not just sitting on an end-of-year assessment and then the kids move on to another grade level and then we decide to make some sort of a change. And changes are numerous. It's time and intervention, it's type of intervention, it's the way that we embed our instructional strategy. So there's quite a few things that go into that process. But you, I just wanted to point out that you kind of really exactly described our day-to-day process that we embark on three times a year.
So the data is always, that's the, the reason why we're doing this. The data is helpful and informs instruction.
Madam President?
Go ahead.
All right. Madam President.
Yes, Greg.
So Dr. Fitzpatrick, Amanda and Dr. Sverin, thank you for all of this. And thank you for patience as we work through understanding what you guys, you know, work with every day. So I just have a couple of clarifying questions, and I'll start with the, the E C R information. I think it was on slide seven or eight, I was trying to note this as you were presenting. You talked about looking at information at the end of the year. Like if we're assessing, you know, our programs, you talked about the end of the year, but we're looking at information like in November, right, for the past year? So I'm just, I just, I have to understand, there's a, there's a piece in there.
Yeah, there's a story there. Right now, we're looking at I A R data. So this is our state accountability measure. Despite the fact that we administer that test in the spring, the state doesn't provide us with those results until the fall, which makes it a little trickier to use that information to make a lot of decisions. And that is exactly why we administer the MAP test multiple times throughout the year to get more information, to provide responsive instruction more in the moment. And that would have been the information we presented last spring that we'll then present again next spring. But we're, that's not to say that in the interim, we're not using that data throughout the year to make adjustments.
Okay, thank you. And then also, we were talking about expected growth. And Dr. Sverin, you were saying that, you know, we're looking at their growth now, but we're comparing it to pre-pandemic norms. I, I feel like there's, if you could explain that a little bit more because we're, we're not pre-pandemic, and that's our goal, right? We want to return to those. But just how does that work when we have this thing before and this thing now?
Sure, so this slide may help with that. So if I'm a student in your district, we, we want to look at what I did in last year. So if I'm in fourth grade, what test did Lenny take in third grade? So N W A Math Fall, Winter, Spring and the State Test. So we want to use that information to project what I'm going to score on my fourth grade assessments. But we also need your local norms. So we need to know how have other students in the past scored in fourth grade? That's the pre-pandemic piece. So those, those growth norms, that expectation of where, where your students are going to score, we're using pre-pandemic data.
Okay, thank you.
We take years of data, yeah. So when we first formed the partnership, we shared data that went back before the pandemic, if that makes sense.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for clarifying that. Okay, and then in the assessment update, just a small item, thank you. There's a terminology change, I think from maybe, I don't know if it was last year or years before, we are now a sender district, not a feeder district. Thank you for that as a middle school educator. I just want to ask, the fitness gram has been canceled. What, what did we use it for? Do we miss it?
Yeah, we, again, we require it of our teachers once a year. Some teachers will administer it in the fall and then again in the spring to note growth for particular students. But yeah, with three years of missing data now, we don't have the ability to lean into that. But we'll look forward to it coming back.
So it wasn't, it wasn't used like a MAP score, you know, when we use it in classrooms to assess, you know, evaluate learning or it, it didn't have a local application? It was just a reporting piece?
I think our P E teachers did some goal setting with students throughout the year. Yep.
Okay. And then on the summer school, reading and math. So we look at those two groups when we're talking about the scores. The students that chose to take that summer school, reading and math, we talked earlier in the year about, you know, teachers recommending to families, maybe your child would like to do this. Is that the population we're talking about? Are these, it's not, is it enrichment or is it?
Yeah, so the, the courses that we are reflected in that information are the ones that are very targeted instruction on reading and math. And students in those programs presented with a variety of, a variety of different profiles. They were either students that were recommended. But if, if the board recalls, any student could sign up for those classes.
Thank you. And then on the, the bullet points at the end of Dr. Sverin's presentation, you know, mentioned a number of things. And I know I asked this prior to the board meeting, but I just want to clarify again here. It wasn't called out, but there was a lower than expected growth for advanced language arts. Is, I mean, is that on the radar too? Or I, I don't expect that that list that was shared was exhaustive, but I was just wondering if, you know, that's on the list.
Sorry, on the list of just things that we're examining.
The bullet points called out, you know, things to be addressed.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
And it seemed like a big area of yellow.
Yeah, well, certainly one of the things we can talk about is we're in our first year of our six-year curriculum cycle looking at reading at the, and literacy at the elementary level. So we're in what's called the research phase. Next year, we'll head into action planning, which is where we take a look at this very information. We decide, are there certain areas that we want to make changes to? It doesn't always, as the board might recall, it doesn't always result in necessarily full-scale curriculum change, but it might be changes in instructional practices. So that will be now a heavy emphasis for us. One of the other things to point out, since we're talking specifically about the I A R assessment versus the MAP assessment, is the I A R includes a writing component that the MAP test does not include. I think in talking with other districts and in talking with Dr. Sverin, that was universally an area that was more difficult to instruct in a remote fashion. And so we do, we are placing more of an emphasis then on that writing instruction for our students now with the hope that that will contribute to greater growth.
Great, well, thank you, Dr. Fitzpatrick. That, like those comments and your comments clarifying at the end of Rich's questions really helped provide us context for all of this information. And maybe I'll just close with Dr. Bein asking that, you know, a lot of information, and I think a lot, my colleague sitting here with me, I know I'll speak for myself, was we're always interested in then, but then what happens? And you explained some of that process. And now is not necessarily the time. But I know I would appreciate in future presentations, whenever you can connect back to something we learned earlier in. You do that oftentimes, you remind us, but that's always appreciated because otherwise these seem like siloed presentations and just connecting them for the laypeople is appreciated.
Yeah, we'll coin you in our excitement because as Amanda had mentioned, now having consistent assessment information, we have more of an ability to do so. So as you might recall, we spent the last few years trying to explain to you why things were different and why we had different pieces of information. So challenging to say the least. So we, we look forward to that period of time where we now have those consistent data sets that we can analyze, look at projections, make some really solidify, and solidify our plans moving forward.
Well, again, thank you.
Madam President?
Yes, Gina.
So I want to camp on to what some of my colleagues had said, and I want to ask a future question on projections. So with math, we've now seen that we are blue. So is this now a new baseline? So this level of growth will contribute to next year's projection at a more accelerated rate and therefore kind of raise the bar, so to speak?
Well, so every year, what happens sometime in the summer is we recalculate where students are in terms of their baseline for starting the school year. So let's say that I'm a, I'll keep using fourth grade. So let's say I'm in fourth grade. I had a really good year in third grade on my assessments. So I scored high enough, I got blue, high growth all year. So what that means is when I start fourth grade, my baseline for how I'm starting fourth grade is going to be higher than it was in third grade. So the projection is actually going to be based on that baseline. So I can still show high growth. I have to score one standard deviation above where we're projecting, given where I'm starting. So the answer is no, it just depends on what happens throughout the school year for that student. So, but just because you have a group of kids that ended the school year with high growth doesn't mean that the following year, they're going to have lower growth or green growth. They could have blue growth. It just depends on what happens in that school year.
Correct. I don't think I got to my question very well. Let me try again. So on slide 12, when we look at the predictive models for the personalized that also then contribute to the district.
Oh, okay.
If, if that growth trend line is, is a more steep angle, then do we benchline against that and therefore actually raise our bar because we're changing our trajectory?
So the short answer is yes, you could change your trajectory. However, the norms are actually fixed standards. So we don't re-norm every year for that reason because otherwise it's a moving target. So when I say that they're pre-pandemic norms, they, they don't include the years of the pandemic. But at some point in the future, you may decide, we may have to re-norm you. So if you have really good growth from now until that happens, then yes, the whole, the, the bar is raised.
The bar is raised, okay. Thank you for that. And then I have one other question. So, and actually, this is, I'm not 100% sure which one of the three of you I will direct this to. So it's a curriculum, two curriculum questions. So E L A, you said we're in year one?
Correct, year one.
One of a six-year curriculum cycle.
So does that mean that the curriculum this year is new?
No, oh, good question. Yeah, no, the curriculum cycle starts with research. So we're taking a look at what are current best practices in E L A. We're looking at, we're researching our data on our students more significantly in that particular area. We then, in our second year, bring together a committee for what's called action planning. Out of action planning, a number of different things can happen. Everything from, we feel really, really good about what we have in place and our resources. We're just going to make some small tweaks. Everything then to, we feel like we need to make a shift and adopt a new curriculum. From there, we head typically into piloting and. From there, we head typically into piloting a new curriculum before making a decision about whether to adopt. So we won't know until we bring that committee together, you know, how quickly then we would move to implementation, but that usually wouldn't be until our third year of our curriculum cycle.
Okay. That gets me 1 through 3.
Uh huh.
And what are we doing 4, 5, and 6?
So then we implement, we have two years of implementation.
4 and 5.
And then, yeah, and then really 6 is starting to take a look at, okay, now are we, you know, with the implementation, are we seeing the kind of growth that we were looking for? And monitoring and refining kind of our instructional practices.
So then hypothetically, last year, we were in year 6.
Mm-hmm.
Because this year, we're in year 1.
Mm-hmm.
And where are we with math?
We are in, so in elementary math, we are looking to implement a new curriculum next school year. This year, teachers are participating in a pretty significant amount of professional learning related to instructional practices. The board might recall, you approved the adoption of that new curriculum last year, and we talked about our professional learning plan for this year to really kind of accelerate teachers' ability to start using that curriculum right away in the fall. So that, it's Math in Focus 2020, so it's the same curriculum, just a different version with some additional resources that we feel will be very beneficial for our students.
So year 3?
So that would make this year 3. And just to add to the story, we're in year 1 of our middle school ELA implementation.
And math?
I knew you were going to ask that question.
Sorry.
Middle school math. Good question. I'll have to get back to you on which specific year we're in, but we're not close to any sort of an adoption there.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Madam President?
Yes?
I had a follow-on question based on what Gina was saying. Can we go to, or some of the questions that Gina had. So can we go to slide 6 real quick? So I appreciate the clarification about the norms because I thought the norms did move based on the performance of the student body. So, but you said we're evaluating against the norms prior to the pandemic. So those would be 20, you know, 2015 through 2018 or something of that nature. Right? So again, I'm trying to relate it back to the percent that meet the standards. If our norms for that period are below standard, then we could show blue till we're blue in our face and not be exceeding, and not actually be moving the norm above where it needs to be, meaning more students meeting the standard.
Yeah. So there's two terms you have to keep in mind, proficiency and growth, and they're independent. Proficiency is, the magic number on the state test is 750, which equates to the performance levels 4 and 5. So you're trying to get as many kids as you can to proficiency because of what that means. Growth is how you're assessing your improvement efforts. It's independent of proficiency. So if you're a student, the golden rule that you've heard me talk about with the administrators is if you're projected below proficiency, you have to grow at an accelerated rate because that's the only way you're going to get to proficiency. If you're a student who's projected above proficiency, having expected growth is fine. So that's where you have to keep in mind, the proficiency and growth are independent of one another. So the norms are established several years, pre-pandemic data, at some point will re-norm. But in terms of catching up, having that blue growth, at some point, the idea is if you have enough blue growth, your proficiency levels will also rise. But you have to grow the kids that are below proficiency at higher rates for that to happen.
But if you're, again, if you're looking at the norms at the, when you are below the proficiency, you're not, you're constantly maybe, you know, saying, yes, I have to have blue, 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 because you're not changing that norm to reflect the new norm, right? That you're making that progress up. Because it should, as more students make it up toward that higher proficiency.
Right. Looks maybe this way.
Your growth will change. But here, we may be saying, you got to get a lot of blue, but really, we're not making that dynamic change, we're not making as much movement as we should.
Yeah. So when you're looking at this information, so let's look at 3rd grade. So the idea is they have expected growth. You know that because you're looking at the growth effect size. That's only okay if you're happy with the 41% that are meeting the benchmark.
Right, yeah.
So if not, you need to shift your distribution of growth scores to get more kids out of that low growth into expected and high growth. As that happens, the growth score gets positive, it'll change blue, and then you'll see that reflected in the benchmark at some point. The benchmark will go higher.
So really, when look, so when looking at these, we should not only be looking at that growth effect size, but that obviously the percent of mench, met benchmark.
That are meeting benchmark, yeah.
And then understanding when the norm, when you're switching the norm. Because that is also an important date because at some point, you're going to switch to post-pandemic.
Right.
Because that'll be your new norm that you're going, which will change all the dynamics as well.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good, I love the data. I mean, this is good, good data.
Okay. Seeing no other comments or questions, we have a thank you so much to all three of you today and for our guests to be here. We appreciate all your hard work. And we will now relieve you and move on to the business and finance portion of our meeting. This is an action item. If I could please have a motion?
Madam President?
Yes, Greg.
I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution authorizing transfer loan of monies from the working cash fund to the debt service fund in the amount of $2,600,000.
Okay. Thank you, Greg. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Chad. Stacy Malik.
Yes. As the board is aware, and we've heard tonight, tax bills are expected to go out by December 1st, meaning that the second installment of taxes for calendar year '21, '22, or levy year '21, will be due by December 30th. We have a $3.3 million debt service payment due December 1st. We only have just over a million dollars in our debt service fund as of right now. Because we didn't get the tax collections in September, October, November, like we typically would, we won't get them till after December 1st. So this is a situation where rather than us having to go out and do some kind of borrowing to pay a debt that we owe, we can borrow money from ourselves, from our working cash fund temporarily until those tax dollars come in, and then we'll just repay it back. It will happen within a couple of weeks, I'm sure, but in order to, for me to be able to do that transfer, I need the board to approve this resolution.
Okay. Thank you, Stacy. Any questions, comments? Okay, seeing none. Lana, would you please call the vote?
Member Sherniglia?
Yes.
Member Jogi?
Yes.
Member Scott Bellato?
Yes.
Member Philippeck?
Yes.
Member Fossil?
Yes.
Member Conley?
Yes.
Member Olenichek?
Yes.
Thank you, Lana. We now have a presentation of the 2022 tentative tax levy, which is an informational item. Thank you, Stacy.
Turn it off. So the presentation is available in Board Docs along with copies of the certificate of levy that you will be voting on next month, the cash balances by fund, the proposed levy, and the public notice that will go into the newspaper. So as always, I like to review what happened previously. So with the 2021 tax levy that we just got the rates about a week ago, we had levied for a total increase in our capped funds, the $68,256,000. We levied for an increase of 3.26%. Knowing that all we will capture is the CPI, which was 1.4% for that levy, plus new growth. We always levy for about 1.5% new growth because we've never seen more than 1% in the last number of years. I projected we'd get about 0.6%. That's typically what we see. And our actual, actual new growth came in at 0.29%. So you can see in the green column there, our actual increase was 1.7% in the cap funds, which represents that 1.4% CPI plus the 0.29% new growth in addition to the bond and interest levy. The thing of note here is that we did see a significant decrease in our overall EAV, equalized assessed value of the property within the district. It decreased down to $1.9 million. In terms, again, of the 2021 tax levy, we know that our tax levy is based on the prior year extension, then increased by the CPI, then increased by new construction to determine our maximum aggregate levy, plus bond and interest. So you can see, we know what our 2020 extension was, we know what the CPI increases. So really, the number that we're guestimating or trying to capture is the new construction. I had projected about $402,000 in new construction dollars, and our actual was $214,000. So I was off by about 0.3%. And then this was the first year that the Levy Recapture Public Act 1020519 was in place that allows taxing bodies to recapture taxes that are refunded after a year that those taxes should have been applied to the overall EAV within a community. And that amount for this district was 530, just over $539,000. So in looking at a tax, I'm looking at two different things. So as a reminder, as we move forward, the district, we levy a dollar amount. We don't levy a rate, we don't levy a percentage. We levy a dollar amount, which is capped by CPI or 5%, whichever is less. So if our total EAV, total taxable property value in the district increases, then our tax rate decreases so that we get that dollar amount only. And as you can see in these charts, as our tax rate percent, or as our EAV declines like it did significantly between 2020 and 2021, our tax rate increases inversely. And again, you can see in every situation, that's what happens in that top graph. And then the bottom graph, just shown differently, is as the blue lines go up, the red line comes down because again, as total property values increase, the rate decreases and vice versa. So in looking at the 2022 levy, as I mentioned, the tax levy is limited to grow by the tax cap law, which is the lesser of 5% or CPI plus new growth. CPI for the 2022 levy is 7%. So this is the first year since the tax caps have come into play that we are actually capped at that 5% level. As I mentioned earlier, new growth has not been more than 1% in the past number of years. So I am proposing to levy at 1.5% for new growth and projecting that we'll probably see about 0.7% new growth. This chart just shows you our new growth percentages overall. Again, typically, you know, 0.7, 0.6, 0.8. And then the CPI, which again, you can see has historically been 2.1%, has been the highest CPI in the last, you know, nine years. So this 5% is the first time, again, since the inception of tax caps. So in looking at, sorry, this, should say, projected 2022 maximum levy, it's based on the 2021 extension, increased by the CPI of 5%, and then adding new construction projected at 1.5% again, to ensure that we capture all of it. So that our projected maximum aggregate levy would be $71.6 million, plus the bond and interest levy, which would be $9.4 million for next year. The tentative tax levy I'm proposing versus the actual extension for last year, and this is what will be reflected in the notice in the paper, is a 6.7% increase. Again, that's with some rounding, the 5% CPI plus the 1.5% new growth in the limited funds. And then you see the bond and interest levy will increase almost double, and that increase is 100% due to the referendum bonds that we sold a month or so ago, based on the June referendum. So that overall, the total increase in the levy will be 12.5%. As I mentioned, when we levy for new growth, we're levying more than we actually anticipate to cap, to see happen because we want to make sure we capture it all. If you don't capture new property growth within the district in the first year it comes on the tax rolls, you lose access to that forever. You can't capture it in a future year, at least not as a school district taxing body. So this chart just shows you that the yellow line represents our historical, what we've levied for, the percentage increase we've levied for. The red line represents what the CPI was. Some, there, somewhere in between that number is where new growth ends up bringing us. So the blue line shows where we actually ended up, the taxes, the increase that actually got extended. Because again, the yellow line, I'm levying for more new growth than I hope, than I expect to see. The blue line, as I've indicated, falls in between those two because new growth hopefully is always less than what we levy for. In terms of overall projected increase, I project our actual increase in our limited funds will be closer to 5.7% because that's the 5% CPI plus the 0.7% I estimate in new growth in addition to the bond and interest levy for a total of an 11.5% increase. I've provided information on our historical tax extensions, similar to the graph I just showed, showing that, you know, you can see that the orange column capped, percent-changing capped extensions. You know, our capped extension hasn't grown ever, you know, more than 3%. In one year, it was 0.94%. That's the cap, again, that we get on our dollar amount of increase in taxes. In terms of the effect on the taxpayer, I showed two examples here because if we assume that the levy recapture will be similar to what it was this year, it was about 0.027% on the tax rate. I don't know what it is, so I also show it at 0. You can see that the dollar change on a typical $400,000 home in the community would be somewhere between $428 and $459. And the key, key to that significant increase is with the referendum bonds, we had indicated all along that that would be a $300 increase on a $400,000 home. So out of that $400, 300 is due to the referendum bonds. And in terms of the prior year levy recapture, this chart just shows you, the blue lines show you what our tax extensions were, what the county clerk sent bills out to the taxpayers for. The gray line shows the amount of refund, I'm sorry, shows, the little orange bars at the bottom show the refunds that were issued after the fact. And so the gray line shows the amount of that extension that the district actually collected. And then the chart below shows that in the actual figure amounts. So had those refunds, had the, had the properties that received refunds been properly assessed prior to determining tax rates, then the total extension that we levy for would have been redistributed amongst everybody. But because they happen after the fact, they come out of current year collections, and prior to that new law, we've never had the ability then to recapture that in any way. So that is my proposal for the tentative levy. Again, the notice will go in the paper, I believe, on November 30th for the public hearing that would be held on the 13th with board vote that same night.
Okay. Thank you very much, Stacy.
Okay, thank you very much, Stacy. Any questions or comments for Stacy?
Madam President?
Yes, Rich.
Stacy, a couple of questions on, slide 13 would be fine. For some reason, I recall when we did the, the vote to recapture the dollars, right? We had anticipated 900,000, and that number's just resonating, I can't put my finger on it. And I'm, here I'm seeing, if I'm reading this right, we recaptured 558. Reality happened, or what happened?
The county, Cook County Assessors Office made a mistake when they released the original numbers, and after I had presented that to the board, like, two weeks later, they said, oh, no, the number is actually this.
The other question then, I know, if I read this right, let's see, sorry. I think, slide 10? So all the puts and takes, then we're looking at a 5.7% increase to it. What would be the impact if, rather, you know, and I, you're probably pegging that the 5% because CPI is at 7, right? So we're pegging to the 5, right? So what would be the impact if, again, knowing that some of the costs obviously went higher, some we were probably in control because we have contracts, things of that nature, that we didn't ask for the 5, we asked for some number less than 5, right? I know you get, you don't, you don't have the number, you don't have the dollars for infinitum, got it. But what is the, where would we take that potential risk if rather than asking for 5 or maxing out at 5, and I'm just throwing out a number, we max out at 3?
So the projections, I mean, we would take the hit, I'd have to figure out where to take that hit, the projections that I had done throughout the referendum, planning, and the analysis financially of the full day kindergarten and absorbing that cost into the operating funds. We've known that CPI is 5% since January, so that number has been built into every financial decision we've made since then. So the three, if we were to reduce our levy to 3%, it comes out of revenues, infinitum. So the 2%, the first year, plus the cumulative effect of that every year thereafter. So I can't tell you what that dollar amount is right now. I would suggest that a possibility would be to, you know, with the recapture levy, that's a one-time fixed amount. If that was something the board would be interested in, perhaps abating that so that we know it would be zero for this levy versus, you know, the .02%. That would be something that isn't permanent cumulative ongoing. It's a one-time, we won't tax it on this tax levy. Would be a way to at least reduce some impact.
You know, when you look at everything, you know, even when we say the, you know, looking at a $400,000 hit, you know, the property tax just for our district is $4,500, then tack on, you know, everything else that tax on to it. And at some point, we're rapidly reaching that, you know, and I think, personally, I think we inverse it where you're paying more in property taxes than you are to your mortgage and things of that nature, which is scary. But that number continues to, to go up, right? Just as you said, you know, your house value may not go up as rapidly. We, fortunately, tend to go up, but, you know, you're tacking on 5% onto an ever-growing larger number, not you personally, but we are, right? It, it starts getting scary, right? You know, the, the compounding effect starts getting scary over time. So I'm wondering, you know, if you look at that, should we start really understanding that and assessing how much, how much can we actually, how much can the community actually afford when looking at that? So that, Stacy, that's necessarily a question to you, but to the board to say, you know, can we continue to, to ask that much, those dollars? Because every year it gets larger. I mean, it's compounding, 5% on, on some, on a number becomes 5% on a different number. It just keeps going up higher and higher. So I pose that out to say, at some point, do we, do we say, hey, at least we got to make some kind of shift or something? And I know we have tons of expenses, I get it. Thoughts?
Stacy, is it every spring that the board takes action on that recapture amount?
They can take it at any time up through, I don't know, March 1st or April 1st.
And if they don't take action on the recapture, they get the funds?
It's automatic.
If they take action to say, we don't want the recapture for this particular year, then that doesn't come out of taxes?
Correct.
Okay, I know the county clerk gave the wrong number last time, but when do they typically know what that amount is each year? Like, when would the board know, oh, the recapture next time is 900,000?
I would have expected to know it already, but it hasn't been released.
Okay, so as soon as it's released?
I would anticipate knowing it before the December meeting, but again, it, you have till at least March 1st, probably April 1st to make that decision.
To take action to not accept that recapture if the board wanted to do that?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, Stacy. This was the informational item today.
Madam President?
Yes, Gina?
Really quick, Stacy, slide 3. Next slide, this one. Since this gets posted for public consumption, can you just check the math on the right-hand column? I think it should be 72, 221.
I think you're right, I will do that.
Thank you. Good catch, Gina.
Thank you.
Okay.
Sorry, oh, sorry, one more thing. Just, and again, can you go back to slide 12? If I'm doing my math right? So what you've, what we just talked about, is the PY adjustment, is that prior year recapture?
Correct, yes.
So just, you know, looking at a percentage, we look at it and go, I don't know what that .0277 is, but if I'm doing my math, it's by $305, right?
It's $30.
$30, so I'm not doing my math right. See, that's why I asked that question. So if you're not recapturing, it changes that $4,500 by $30 to?
It shows on the bottom that changes.
Right, right, so it's $30 less.
Correct.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm not thinking it's a, I, yeah, obviously, $30 is $30, gotta love it, so.
Well, in a year like this, yeah.
That's what I mean, $30 is $30, so.
Okay, thanks for this informational item, and I'll come back to the board, so keep letting all this marinate and we can have continued conversation next, at the next board meeting. So we're going to move on to workers' compensation insurance renewal for calendar year 2023, and this is an action item. If I could please have a motion?
Madam President?
Yes, Greg?
I move that the Board of Education approve Illinois Public Risk Funds as the provider of the workers' compensation insurance for calendar year 2023 at a cost of $459,750.
Okay, thank you, Greg, a second please.
Second.
Thank you, Rich, and Stacy.
Yeah, unfortunately, we're seeing a 15% increase in our workers' compensation premium. Through September of this year, we have $314,000 in claims with getting very close to what we actually paid in premium. So, and needless to say, having three claim months left, the renewal doesn't look good. They do base it on five years. We were just starting to have a good couple of years, looking to maybe, and then this year, just not, not going as well as we had hoped. We are part of the Illinois Public Risk Fund pool. So their, their proposed renewal is 15, or the renewal is 15.2%. Part of that is an overall payroll increase of 1.5%. And then they do issue or offer us a grant of about $16,800 that comes back to the district to help us fund. We typically use that to fund the security, or cameras, security cameras outside of our buildings. That's all I have.
Okay, and this is an action item. So are there any questions, comments before we take a vote? Okay, seeing none, Lana, if you could please call a vote?
Member Jogi?
Yes.
Member Scott Bellato?
Yes.
Member Philipek?
Yes.
Member Faso?
Yes.
Member Conley?
Yes.
Member Olenichak?
Yes.
Member Sherniglia?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Lana. We'll move on to facilities management, and thank you, Stacy, for all, all that information tonight, we appreciate it. We'll move on to facilities management, I see Ryan here, this is an action item under our strategic plan of stewardship of resources again. So I need an action, I need a motion.
Madam President?
Yes.
I move that the Board of Education approve the updated parking agreement with Orchard Church as presented.
Okay.
Second.
Tongue twister, thank you, Rich, for the second. Ryan?
Yeah, good evening. Now, this is the renewal of the parking agreement for the Orchard Church, which is near Olive and Thomas Schools. The current agreement is set to expire in 2023, and with all the upcoming work at Olive and the zoning requirements of the village, we're looking to renew this for a period of 10 years with a five-year automatic renewal at the end of that period. There is a 90-day termination of policy in the agreement, but it cannot be enforced during the school year, so we would not be without parking during the school year. So essentially, it would go into effect then if we, either one of us would go into the 90-day period, it would go into effect during a summer period. This agreement allows HSD 25 to use the Orchard parking lot during the school year on school days. In return, the church gets to use our parking lot on weekends for their events, including church services. This increases the parking efficiency in the area and eliminates the need for additional parking in the neighborhood, so it's a beneficial agreement to both of us. Olive currently does not have enough parking on site per the village ordinance, so this agreement in the past project allowed us to seek a variance and be approved for the variance for parking agreements. So again, we don't have enough spots on our current site, but since we had this agreement in place, they did approve the variance, and we're expecting the same going forward. There is no financial impact with this agreement, and because we both are going to maintain our own parking lots for snow removal and additional improvements, so there is no financial impact. So again, we feel it's a great benefit to the community to leverage this area that we both can use.
Okay, thank you, Ryan. What a great kind of relationship with a, with a community, with a church and school as far as a community partnership, so that's, that's great, and no cost. So any questions, comments for, for Ryan? Okay, seeing none, Lana, if you could please call the vote?
Member Scott Bellato?
Yes.
Member Philipek?
Yes.
Member Faso?
Yes.
Member Conley?
Yes.
Member Olenichak?
Yes.
Member Sherniglia?
Yes.
Member Jogi?
Yes. Like the coach said earlier today, I didn't realize this vote was going to be funny, so that's, that's good to have some humor. Between Chad and Lana there.
It starts to happen as we approach 10 o'clock.
You guys are all doing really great in our audience, we appreciate your, our audience being here for this long meeting as well. So we're moving on to our superintendent's report with some informational items, beginning with the Freedom of Information Act. Dr. Bay?
Thank you, as we do every month, we've listed for the board any Freedom of Information Act requests we've received and when we responded to each of those requests.
Okay, thank, thank you. And Illinois Report Card is an informational item as well, Dr. Bay?
Yes. So, turn to my, here. As you know, the Illinois Report Card was published in late October, I think the 27th this year. It's actually grown over time, it's 170-plus page report now, but it's a lot easier to access online, it's really pretty user-friendly, and you can actually do a lot of calculations and comparisons. But overall, that report gives us information about academic progress, the equity journey continuum, our district environment in terms of climate surveys, finances, class sizes, information about students, accountability, information about teachers and administrators. And so I'm just going to hit some of the highlights for you for that report. This is just a general screenshot, again, that shows you the variety of things that are available in the Illinois School Report Card. Again, anyone can go to illinoreportcard.com, it's very user-friendly, you can enter a school, a district, you can do comparisons and choose, I think, up to 10 schools to compare, whether you're looking at student mobility, school finance, retention, chronic absenteeism, summit of designations. Again, it covers everything from soup to nuts. If you want to print the whole thing out, it's 170-plus pages, but again, real easy to use on the website. One of the overall things that occurs each year, this was gone for a couple of years, but it's back, is what the state considers under its accountability section, and that's that every school gets a designation. There are four designations you can get. Exemplary means that a school is scoring academically, and there's a variety of things that figure into that, in the top 5% of schools across the state. And they have no underperforming subgroups. In commendable, it means that you're scoring well and you have no underperforming subgroups. I think targeted is the next one, and it means that overall, you may be scoring in an average way, but you have some subgroups that are scoring lower than state expectations. And then I don't remember even the last one, basically means you're in the bottom 5% of school districts. So we can be very proud that our nine schools out of 3,500 schools in the state of Illinois are in the commendable and exemplary areas. One of the things the board has talked about, and I thought I would shine a little bit of light on, is the growth, basically the growth gap between our students with IEPs and our students who do not have IEPs. And what this shows on the right in the circle, in 2020, is that there is a growth gap of 42% on the state math assessment between our non-IEP students in District 25 and IEP students in District 25. So that's the light green bar in the circle. So that's the gap on how students do on the state assessment in math between our non-IEP students and our IEP students. And the board has talked before about how that's a larger gap than the state average. The blue bar shows you that the state average gap between IEP and non-IEP students is only It is important when you look at that, though, to note that our non-IEP growth is 20% higher than the state average. So we definitely have some learning recovery to work on with our students with IEPs in the area of math, but we also recognize that our gap is larger than the state average because of the growth of our non-IEP students is larger than the state growth in that group. So this is an area, again, where the data gives you some questions to ask and some things to focus on. We're definitely working on that. The board will get some real specific information on our special services programs through the NSSO audit, December or January, I think they'll be ready to present that information. Kind of related to what Dr. Sparren was talking about, and the following slides I'm showing you are slides with data that ECRAD did provide us so that we could do some comparison. We know the state tells us, don't compare 2019, 2022, because there's so many variables, but we still want to look at, how are we doing compared to the state as well as compared to ourselves in our local districts like Amanda Sernick showed you. So just an example of, depending on what you look at, right? This is not our district, but an example, and you can look at our district and see the same. A school district might have 47% of their students meeting or exceeding Illinois standards, but they might be in the 91st percentile statewide, meaning they're doing add or better than 91% of the school districts across the state. So even that proficiency target on the state exam is less than a district might like, it shows you how things are going across the state. We also have data that shows this is similar to 47% meeting exceeding on Illinois standards when you look at the national assessment of academic progress across the country, actually is equal to an 80 to 85% percentile across the country. So again, it just depends on making sure that you understand what you look at, all of it has good information. All of it has good information and helps us ask good questions. So similar to what Dr. Sparren was showing, I thought I would just give you some, again, comparative information for District 25 compared to the state. And what we've highlighted in the blue rectangle is 2022, different parts of the Illinois Assessment and Readiness and where we are compared to the state. So the first row in ELA proficiency on the state exam, we're at the 82nd percentile. So our scores on the state exam, we're only 44.7%, but we're in the 82nd percentile across the state. So we're scoring add or better than 82% of the districts across the state of Illinois. In math proficiency, like she mentioned, we're at the 92nd percentile. ELA participation, so it's just another data point, and we'll have several even outside of student achievement to show you. In terms of the number of kids in our district who participated in the state test, 98% of our students participated. That only puts us at the 33th percentile across the state, right? Everyone's somewhere 98, 99, 100, so it's all very close. So that just gives you participation rates, gives you those 40%. And then all the way, the last, the last row there is eighth grade students passing Algebra I. The district, our district value was 60%. Last year, which, or two years ago, three years ago, it was 93% were passing Algebra I. We've changed that because the high school has come to us and said, you have all these great kids coming to us who've already taken Algebra, but then they're struggling the second half of freshman year and many of them are having to repeat that course as sophomores. And it's devastating to them to have to repeat it. So could you kind of firm up the kids that you're qualifying to take Algebra as eighth graders so they're not having that situation? So we did firm that up. So in 2022, we only had 60% of our kids passing Algebra I as eighth graders. We're at the 89th percentile across the state. So add or better than 89% of the districts across the state in the percent of kids they having, they have passing Algebra I, a high school course, by the time they leave eighth grade. Just to give you, I'll just go quickly through these. This shows you the proficiency distribution of our district. We're the thin lines along with the state. So in 2019 in gray, you see the state's proficiency curve. You see we're at 60%. In 2022, you see the state's purple proficiency distribution go lower. We also went lower to the 47 or so percent. So we're following that same trend we're seeing across the state. This is the same for math. Again, we saw a smaller decrease across the state and a smaller decrease in District 25 as well. Again, our lines doing much better than the state overall, but seeing that same trend of the decrease. Here's another comparison perspective, this one on financial information that you can find on the Illinois School Report Card. So the first line, for example, is the average teacher salary. We're in the 86th percentile, so add or better than 86% of school districts across the state. Average administrator salary, we're at the 77th percentile. Local property tax, 89th percentile. The EAV we have per pupil, we're in a very wonderful area. We're in the 81st percentile compared to the state. And then again, it shows you the amount that we spend per pupil, both from instruction and operational, in the 60% areas across the state. Again, it's just a way to look at things in a comparative way. Student demographics, I thought, I think it's all interesting, but I thought this was interesting. The top line is white students. So 75.8% of our district students identify as white. We're in the 42nd percentile across the district. So there are a lot more districts who have a higher percentage of white, but there are also districts that have a lower percent. So again, this just shows you each of the breakdowns by subgroups. English language learner is an interesting one, but I would say the biggest interest for me on this is the second to last row, which is low income. What's interesting here is the data that shows in 2019, 7% of our students qualified as low-income students. In 2022, three years later, we're at 12.6%. So we're seeing a bit of an increase in our low-income families in District 25. At the same point in that blue rectangle, we're only in the 7th percentile. So we're a wealthy community compared to the state. But again, it is important for us to watch how our student demographics change over time. And I think this is the last one I wanted to just show you as an example. This is district characteristics. The top line is our enrollment. We have seen a decrease in enrollment over the last few years, yet we're also in the 94th percentile. We are actually, this may be surprising to you, but we are considered a large district in the state of Illinois for an elementary school district. Our attendance rate is shown. While it didn't change significantly, we did go up from the 79th percentile to the 84th percentile across the district. Our mobility, we have low mobility compared to the state. Our average class size. Teachers with, with advanced degrees, the second from the bottom row, I thought is interesting. We've stayed at the 90th percentile. Over 70% of our teachers have master's degrees or beyond. I think that's pretty impressive and we see the impact of, of their continual learning on our kids. So I just wanted to show you, again, the Illinois School Report Card is vast, vast amounts of information, really great information. Again, I encourage people to go to illinoreportcard.com. It's incredibly user-friendly. You can pick just achievement if you want. You can pick just finances if you want. And then you can also pick comparative statistics if you want. And you can pick schools in the area, schools across the state. It's a really useful tool based on the Illinois Report Card that came out in October that is mostly 21, 22 data. Please note, it does, there are parts on it that shows like the equity continuum, that's data from 2018. It'll highlight that some of the financial data is from 2019 to 2021. So just pay attention to that, but happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Vine. Any questions, comments? Okay, we will move on to the presentation of Climate and Culture Report for HumanX Ventures, Dr. Vine, that's an informational item.
This is a tool that we have used for a few years now. We used it back in 2016, then they changed it, and then we've used it consistently, 2019, 2020, 2022. Basically, on a high level, it measures your staff satisfaction and your staff engagement levels that they report. They answer questions about how they feel about their, themselves, about the team that they work with, about their direct supervisor, and about the organization as a whole. It also has some questions about diversity, inclusion, and equity and their perspective on how we're doing in that area in the district. So I thought I'd share this with you. Basically, what you're looking for are the top four right-hand boxes. This shows you the satisfaction level and engagement level, and you want to see most of your staff in those top four right boxes. Now, the, the data that I'm showing you here is for the district as a whole, so taking all of our schools, all of our departments. And that red circle is what they kind of call the sweet spot, right? That's where you want to see most of your staff having very high satisfaction and high engagement. The little rectangle box that we've added to that is what the scores were last year. So for example, in that red circle this year, 79% of our staff report very high satisfaction and very high engagement. Last year, that was 66%. And I'll show you that in a couple of ways. This just shows you all the different dimensions that are assessed in this survey. It looks at how staff feel about their pride about the district, the quality of instruction, innovation. Are they recognized? Do they have training? These are the main areas that it measures. It shows you on this chart, then, what the mean is versus the last time we took it. And the arrow shows you, did our reporting go up, go down, or stay the same? Anything, this is a five-point scale. Anything 4.0 or above is really very high and very strong. They consider 3.0 to 4.0 still good, but anything above four is really considered a strength. This, I think, is a helpful, but small for you to see on the screen, but a helpful chart that we put together. This breaks down everything throughout the district by building. So all the way on the left, it says D-25, that's everybody together. The next three bars are Dryden School, then Greenbrier, Ivy, all the way through and towards the end. We, we also do this with our facilities department, those who work at Dutton, and our administrators. The blue lines show you the satisfaction and engagement level when we did this in October of 2019. So all the way on the left for District 25, that was 81% of staff saying that they felt highly satisfied and highly engaged. The orange box, we did in December of 2020, and you can see that that dropped across the district, 66% of our staff reported feeling highly satisfied and highly engaged. And then we just did it this September, the green box, again, across the district, showing you that we're starting to trend back up to 79% of our employees. The lines that are going horizontal are important. HumanX's research across the country shows you that an average corporation or other than a public school district, their average satisfaction is about 32%. That's the red line. So their average red circle, that high sweet spot of high satisfaction and high engagement in corporations, the average across the country is 32%. For schools across the country, the average is 62%. Again, that sweet spot, high satisfaction, high engagement across the country. For public schools, 62%. So we can feel really good about what our staff is reporting, about their report on the culture in the district during this year. And we continue to look at that each year. A couple more details. Again, there are some questions related to diversity, equity, inclusion. In general, you can see how teachers report, how they feel like we're doing in those areas, and that that arrow on the right is trending up slightly from last year. There are a ton of details in this report. Each of our principals has their school-based report. They share it with their staff. They talk about what are they really proud of, what are areas they might want to work on together. And again, we'll continue to do this on a yearly basis to continue to see how our trends are in every area. Questions?
Yeah, thank you so much, Dr. Vine. I may kick off with a question here. Can you remind me, Dr. Vine, how many staff members took this survey?
So, let's see if it tells me. One of the slides said 600 something?
Okay, okay, yep, thank you. Thank you, that's, that's good.
616, thank you.
That's good response.
Yeah, really good response.
That's awesome.
I just have one question. So looking at the, what is this slide number? Four? Just, I noticed like everybody else seemed to jump pretty much a lot. Westgate is the one school that seemed to be not as high. Is there a reason behind that? Just, I get it, but it just seems like everybody else was boom, boom, boom. Westgate kind of, yes, it went up, but it didn't jump as much as everybody else. I'm just trying to understand some.
Yeah, so that's something now, we can't pinpoint anything exactly, but that's something that that staff is now reviewing their results and talking about, okay, what areas did we go down in? Can we identify why? And what do we want to do about that so that we feel we have better satisfaction and engagement moving forward? And again, at school level, they can see results of which questions are about me reporting on myself? Which questions are me reporting about my team? Which questions are me reporting about my supervisor? And which questions are me reporting about the district organization as a whole? So they're able to break that down in each building and with their building leadership teams and their staff will determine, is there something different they want to do moving forward?
Also asked, does that have anything to do with the facility? I mean, just in general because.
That would be my.
Knowing how small, like, like when, after doing the tour and seeing how they've got crammed rooms, everything, I'm assuming that could be some of the concern in general?
That would be my educated guess, but.
That was one of the big part of our conversations that we kept them there at the program, and I think it's important that we did that. But I also see that, like, I was hoping that we would have seen like, hey, we're satisfied, but not as much as expected.
Yeah, again, that's, again, at their building level, they will all determine, why do we think these results look this way? Is there something we can do together to feel more satisfied and engaged? Again, much higher than typical public schools, but yes, different than what they typically trend.
Madam President?
Yes, Greg?
Just, no questions, just a couple of observations, really, just to put out there. What I found interesting or of note in the first portion were, under the relationships, support, equip, and communication, number 31 for relationships, personal coaching, support, equip. Number 28, quality time with supervisor, communication, 27 and 24, communication with supervisor. And what I read into the, out of that, again, at a surface level, but that it seemed like there's a desire, like, for more coaching and more from the staff, interest in that.
Yeah, and totally related to that is, you may be aware of this, over the last three years, the state has waived all staff evaluations. That's when most of our coaching conversations happen. So we haven't had those formative, formal experiences over the last three years. They've just returned this year. So that would be an area that'd be interesting to see. Now that that process has returned, will we see higher satisfaction in that area?
And then just one other observation was under inclusion, 97 and 96, which talk about the perceived safety of the workplace for persons of color, which I think is an important marker if we're looking to increase the diversity of our workforce, there has to be a perceived safety, you know, intellectually and socially for people of color.
Good observations. And piggybacking on Chad's question, so no, when, when schools go back dive deeper, Dr. Vine, will, it'd be great to get an update after the analysis has happened as to the, what, you know, based on Chad's question?
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? No. But now, now we get to some fun pictures of the, and a report of the IASA Global Service Project that I referenced earlier, that Brian and Dr. Vine attended on behalf of the district. And this trip was directly linked to our strategic plan. So we're really excited to hear about this from, for both of you.
Thank you. Sponsored by the Illinois Association of School Administrators. Financially sponsored by some corporate partners of IASA. Brian and I were happy that District 25 was chosen as one of the 15, 16 districts from across the state of Illinois to go. Was a very meaningful experience. And as Anisha referenced, our strategic plan says empower an inclusive, diverse community of learners to innovate and thrive as global citizens. So we really were, in addition to going and providing some amazing service, trying to learn more about what are our options on how we educate kids about being global citizens. So Brian and I, there's our strategic plan right there. Brian and I are excited to share with you some of the work that we did and some of the things that we learned. The goals of this trip were to help school districts implement global citizenship competencies, to inspire school districts to create opportunities for our students and staff to give back locally, nationally, and globally. To connect board members and superintendents from throughout Illinois, there were 33 of us, 17 superintendents. There were thirty-three of us, seventeen superintendents, and sixteen school board members from across the state, to bring together educational leaders for a common purpose about global-minded service learning, to gain understanding of global political systems, needs, and cultural similarities and differences through learning and through service, and while we're there, to make a positive difference in the lives of those that we served in the Dominican Republic. Just for reference, here is the island that has both the Dominican Republic and Haiti, and we were really kind of in the middle of Dominican Republic. Most people, when they think of the Dominican Republic, they think of the resorts on the east coast in Punta Cana. We were nowhere near resort land, I can tell you that. We spent some time in the mountains and some time on the coast, but more in the center of the country. We also were not on the west coast of the Dominican Republic. That is connected to Haiti. You may or may not know Haiti is in quite political turmoil right now. It really would not be safe for us to be that close to Haiti at this time. So with our thirty-three new friends from throughout Illinois, and our new friends we met from the Dominican Republic, we set some goals, we reflected on everything every day, and we learned and toured three main cities. Again, a mountain village, a coastal town, and a main city. This is, I'll get us started, and then Brian can jump in. This is our first night arriving, where we were all talking about what is our, each, what is our individual goal for being there, and what do we hope to learn, to bring back to our school districts from the experience? We basically rode a bus everywhere we went. I A S A had five different T-shirts, one for each day, same T-shirt, different color, that we would all wear so that we could be identified as being with our group of learners. We visited two, basically, school systems. One, Institute of Environmental Sustainability, that serves nineteen-to-twenty-seven-year-olds from across the island, all on scholarship. And so we learned about environmental sustainability and the importance and the need, how much is needed in the Dominican Republic and Haiti. Those students are trained in a three-year program, then get jobs with the forestry division and help out in their countries. You'll see a lot of garbage, a lot of poor infrastructure. They learned how to recycle and how to make those things better. We helped with forestry projects. We painted murals. We painted a basketball court. We went to a, what's called the Dream Project Elementary Program that focuses on literacy, and we helped do a lot of construction there as well. We'll show you some pictures from that. And we also got to work and spend a Saturday afternoon with students. This is at the environmental school that we went to. They're teaching the students on the left how you either use, or you recycle, or you reuse. And so they're, they were making buildings out of plastic bottles and furniture out of plastic bottles. They told us that after we left, they were going to relocate this whole thing to another part of the property, so take it all down, rebuild it all. And then on the right is sustainable farming practices that they were teaching for the students. At this area, they grow about seven hundred thousand trees for the island each year, and you'll see we spent a lot of time weeding baby trees while we were there. We learned about the institute. You see Brian kind of in the middle there. And then we broke into groups. Brian went into kind of the hard construction group. I went into the pulling weeds from baby trees group. And we met amazing people and learned along the way. There was a third group that was helping paint some murals throughout the institute to just kind of make it a nicer place for, these students do live there for three years, so try to make it a nicer place for them. There's a group that's also painting a bench. And you see Brian on the left using a, a tree trunk and recycled piece of wood. I will say that the tools that we had to work with in general, in general, were really primitive.
Yeah, grossly undersized hammer, that's mahogany.
Yeah.
That's like a really hard wood.
One of the things.
Literally, they cut down the day before that we had to run a, you know, twelve penny hammer.
Yeah. I would say one of the things we walked away with is we found ourselves saying, well, we'll just get them new tools. We'll go to the store, we'll buy new stuff. And when you had to realize, that's not how they needed to solve it, right? That wasn't sustainable to them. They needed, they used what they could afford, and they reused. We did a lot of painting, and we wanted to throw away all the brushes. And they were like, what? Don't throw away the brushes, don't throw away the cans. So it just realized that my solution in my world is not necessarily the right solution in every world. You see a superintendent and a board member there carrying a log from the bottom of a hill up to the top so that Brian could cut, cut it and start making a bench. This was another place that we visited where we were by hand mixing different amounts of sand and grain to make bricks on the right. What you see is us forming those bricks, because in a very poor mountain village, they've been, it's been donated that they all have these little clay stoves, and these bricks go in them to keep the heat in the stoves. Because before these stoves, everybody in the mountain village was cutting down hundreds of hundreds of trees a year to cook and to heat. So this helps them to not be cutting down the trees and to have a more sustainable way of cooking and heating. That is, you see me there on the left, and the right is one example of a growing tree, and we were pulling lots and lots of weeds out of every tree. Each one of us there on this day probably did eight hundred to a thousand trees that we took the weeds out of. You'll see some of the people in the, some of the ladies in the background that worked there. They were really happy we were there because they got to go home early that day because we helped with some of the work. And we learned that all the trees that we were doing that day would come around and have to go through the same thing the next week. That's how much the weeds would just keep taking over if every week they didn't repull the same thousand trees that you pulled the week before. On the left, this is when we went to see the Dream Project, one of the classrooms that really was kind of a Montessori-type classroom for early childhood through third grade. We were there during their Saturday school program. On the right, they had an old basketball court. You could see we'd already repainted the wall, and we did end up taping off and repainting the court. We were running out of paint, so the people that worked there, we wanted to go buy new paint. They thought that was ridiculous, so they just kept thinning the paint. And we did finish it, but if you looked at it now, you could see some of it's with thinner paint. But it was, we were just happy to really be able to be of service and do something that their students would be able to use. Here's some harder construction. This is a cement building. On the left, you'll see Jason, one of our, one of the company representatives who was there, starting to make a hole in the wall. On the right, you see Brian continuing to work on that with a less-than-appropriate tool, because eventually we want to make that into a full door, open from top to bottom. So it was about ninety-five-plus degrees, hot and sweaty, not easy work, but very fulfilling work. On the left, inside of that building, they were creating a new storage area. They had knocked down a lot of the interior areas, and then were building cement block. And so you see Brian, there's a superintendent from Hillside there, and some of the workers from the Dream Project. And I thought this was interesting. On the right, in order to mix all the cement that they needed, here's a group of people actually using a, what, a sieve kind of thing, a homemade-made sieve, to make sure that the cement was as fine as possible before it got mixed with water. These are some of the kids that came that day. A third group, so there was the construction group, the painting group here, and then they had a group that was planning like a field days for when the kids came. And so now the kids were here, they had a lot of fun, we did crafts, we had time where they reflected and talked about someone, another student in their group that was helpful to them that day. We did a lot of outdoor, kind of like you'd think, field events. Of course, the most popular were the water ones, where they had to play with the water. But it was just super great to be with them. I will tell you that, working with them in the craft room, as they would write their names, third graders in this group would write their names like we might see a kindergartner or first grader write their name. And that's why the Dream Project provides a lot of extra support for literacy. Their goal is to increase the literacy of kids. In the Dominican Republic, they feel that in the last twenty years, they're making great strides in education. It's just been in the last six years that they've had full-day education for elementary kids. It had always been half-day. So they feel like they're, they are growing leaps and bounds. In addition to the work that we did, we ate the food, including at a Dominican Republic family's home that you'll see. We learned about the traditions throughout the country, the history of the country. We toured the landscape, and, and I put this in, saw what was really surprising to me, a real lack of infrastructure. You couldn't walk down the sidewalk without looking because it was torn apart in pieces everywhere you went. Plumbing was very challenging, something that I admit I take for granted, but I would like to always take for granted after being there. And garbage everywhere because they just don't have the infrastructure to deal with waste. But we ate a lot of really great food. Here's the family's house on the right. We had a lot of rice and chicken, and people would say the best avocados they've ever had. Everywhere we went, people rushed to get the avocados. The families and the people that served us were so kind and excited to share their foods, their traditions. We got to try out some clay making here on a clay wheel, a manual clay wheel. We had some students teach us some traditional dances. We all watched and clapped. They didn't think that was good enough. They grabbed us and made us all get out there. Every one of us had to dance several dances that night, so. And we learned about some of their symbols and their history. We did an art walk in Santa, Santa Domingo, which was really interesting. A lot of murals outside that have been made and represent the culture and the activities going on in the Dominican Republic. I chose just this one on the left to show you because it, it just really stopped me in my tracks. They explained that this is a mural of a Dominican Republic woman who is putting curlers in her hair so that she can straighten her hair. And I thought of all the times I've put curlers in my hair to make my hair curly, and it just really surprised me when they talked about that. We had a local man who made us probably the best empanadas we'd ever had while we were there as well. We worked really hard. We pretty much all had to donate our shirts to be washed and donated because we were very sweaty, very tired. We learned so much about the Dominican Republic, and again, that my answer is not necessarily the right answer for a different culture or a different country, but how we could be better and how we were connected. And we really got to know great people from across the state. We had time to share stories of our experiences, being on school boards, being superintendents during the pandemic, about best practices and instruction. And I know we look forward to continuing to stay in touch with them. Those conversations were really impactful. Here's one picture of the whole group. This was purple shirt day, apparently. And this is another shot when we were at the Dream Project, working with the elementary students. We got a chance to take a picture there. So what do we do with this trip? It's really, I know Brian would agree, we've put a lot of thought. It's just really taken, it's really touched us in many ways of recognizing who we are as global citizens. And so what's next is we need to do some further research about, does global service learning support District twenty-five's mission? There's one district, actually North Shore one-twelve, that just took a group of eighth graders on this same trip. They were there kind of overlapping with us. And so I want to reach out to them and go, talk to me about what your students, what was the impact on your students? They took their students in their bilingual, dual-language programs. So I just want to see, what was it, what did they feel the kids gained from that experience? Do we want to organize a staff trip? It does make you think differently as an adult. That might be something we want to do. Or a student-parent trip. So do we want to take, I'll tell you, I'm a little gun-shy of middle school trips, since during the pandemic, we had some issues with a company, I felt, in following through on, on reimbursing families. And we've, you know, we've taken kids on trips before, even internationally to Japan. But I wondered, do we want to do a student-parent trip? Students and families who want to go? Do we want to do that kind of experience if we're going to tip our toe into that water? And of course, there's many other options to look at implementing global competency instruction, and so it's time for us to start investigating those in alignment with our strategic plan. Brian, are there things?
No, I didn't, especially given the time, I could talk, I could talk at length about the trip. I just kind of want to underscore, like, the last night we were there, right, we all kind of went around, and it seemed excessive at the time, but we all went around and kind of reflected, obviously, right? And so these are things that you would, whether we decided to send staff, students, admin, I kind of put the student's hat on, right? And the unique thing, I think, about this trip that I was not expecting on the front end and reflecting back on was huge, was, was the service component, right? I, I'm pretty well-traveled professionally and personally, and my kids and I take mission trips to our church, and that's a different element, similar in hard work, but the service aspect of this, I think, is such a huge thing that you, you can't really experience. If you had traveled to the Dominican Republic for any other reason than this, you would have been on the, on the east coast in Punta Cana, probably, right? At an all-exclusive resort. Like, we saw people and things in that culture that you wouldn't otherwise see. And so that, to me, was the most eye-opening thing. And then they also asked us, you know, what do you want to take away, or what do you want to do? And, you know, I feel obligated to share what I, what I said there, is that, you know, as a board member, our role is to shape our district, right? And so, you know, what better way to get exposed to something like this that we could bring back to the district? And just evaluate, I mean, this what's next slide is really yet for us. You know, what, what could this do for our students? What could this do for our staff? But the, the tie-in, you know, again, just to underscore to our mission of empowering an inclusive, diverse community of learners to innovate and thrive as global citizens, huge direct ties on so many levels that we got out of this trip. So it gives us a lot to think about. And, you know, again, on a personal note, we, I think, the, the foreign exchange student program with the Japan students may or may not have run its course. So the timing might be right for us to evaluate something else for our district. So just some of those things that I kind of took away from it that I wanted to share with the board.
Wow. Go ahead.
No, that's it.
I believe, like my board colleagues, we're just so proud of you for doing this. What a phenomenal service learning and leadership experience, and so immersive, and with the global competency piece, the global perspectives, and what that does, and how that's going to benefit our students and our community at large. And we know that university, you know, we want to be sure that our district kind of stands out in everything we do, and this benefits and runs across the curriculum. And we know that university programs have a global learning component and a service learning component. So this, the fact that you were accepted out of a very small cohort showed just, I believe it was a selective cohort that went out there, is, we're just so proud of you, and that was hard, hard work. You were not sitting at a resort at all. You worked really hard. I, I venture to guess that you got a really good workout the whole time. So thank you, truly. To me, I grew up out of this country, and it means a lot that I have students in District twenty-five as well. It means a lot to me that my fellow board members and educators took time out from their personal time to go do this. So thank you so much personally and both as a board member. Are there any other questions, comments? They're all wild like I am. Okay, it is ten thirty-five. This is one of our longer meetings. We are going to move on. Thank you, Dr. Bine, for that really comprehensive report with, with Brian. Now we're going to move on to future, sorry, community input. And if there's any blue slips, then I will take community input. We don't have any blue slips, thank you, Lana. So we will move forward to commu, to future agenda items. Dr. Bine?
So currently on our future agenda topics coming up, our library policy. A board member had asked about that. A reminder that the Policy Committee will review that as part of Section Six at their meeting in December. meeting in December, and then we would follow up with that for the full board in January. Board members have asked about the Code of Conduct document that's used mostly at our middle schools. We have that, gathered that information, we'll have that on the December agenda as well. And then I know a board member had also asked for us to look at summer U funding. As you know, we funded it with ESAR funds in the last couple of years, making those support classes free for our families. That is to expire this summer, but I know the board wanted to talk about it. So we'll do that in January to see if the board wanted, wants to change at all how we fund summer U.
Thank you. And the next topic is new topics. Was, sorry, did you just go over that?
No, that, no, now it's if anybody has additional topics they'd like us to.
Yes. Any additional topics? Nope.
I think Lana has gotten a blue slip, if we can add that in.
We have that agenda item, but we will accommodate. If it's okay with my board, I'm going to accommodate this comment. Okay. Mr. Burke?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, I know the board does not make answers, but is it possible to get an yes or no or something? Does it matter?
You could always, Dr. Bine will get in touch with you, I, the next state, so you'll get a more fuller answer than a yes or no.
Okay. First of all, some comments. That must have been unbelievable experiences that you had traveling. I'm sorry, but I wish you would not encourage children to go on that trip. The liabilities, the risks, and if any of you have ever traveled anywhere, you never know what can happen on a trip. And have the children on a trip and have the district liable? Wrong. It's a great learning experience, let that be done with their parents. Again, the district can decide what they want. Secondly, there was a comment made about funding for elections. I don't know how you enforce that, I don't know why there would be a limit. If you put a limit on funding, then put a limit also on all of your social information. Get it off the internet, don't put things out there, because it's no different than having funding. That's free and you can do it yourself. Third, a comment. The League of Women Voters have historically moderated discussions by candidates. I'd like to discourage that. They are an activist group. You know that, and they have consistently shown it. They take a position, and they will bring questions out, and sometimes even embarrass organizations. That's wrong. And just the questions they select will limit what the public can hear from the candidates. Please reconsider that. Finally, on the budget. It was recently, home values in Arlington Heights, the average was 400,000. Everyone that lives in Arlington Heights has been reassessed. I'm going to make a conservative estimate, in excess of 20%. So that $400,000 home that you were talking about now is 480. The home hasn't changed, it's just the taxes on it will change. Consider this in your evaluations and your analysis for up-and-coming assessments. It is going to be a significant. And this board has done a very good job with finances. Does it really need the money? Thank you.
Thank you. And at that note, I believe we have successfully gone over a very long agenda. I need a motion to adjourn back into closed section so this board can continue volunteering at time for our district. So a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Okay, a second. Thank you, thank you, Scott. All who?
Paper?
All who are paper?